Recording in progress.
Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Monday evening on October 30th. I now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
For the record, he is participating remotely. Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Councilmember Newsom?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you'll be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for a public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We'll begin with the first item on the special meeting agenda, which is a study session item. Voter opinion survey on draft general plan 2040 heights and land use designations. It looks like we have our communications manager Samantha Weigel and Tim McClarny, President of True North, available.
Great, thank you, Mayor Lee, and members of the City Council. Yes, my name is Samantha Weigel. I'm the city's communications manager and we are joined tonight via Zoom by True North Research President, Dr. Timothy McClarny, who will present the results of our latest survey. So just for some background, Dr. McClarny and his firm have conducted four surveys for the city of San Mateo, including two general community surveys as well as two surveys of voters regarding prior ballot measures that the city was involved in. True North was originally selected after a very competitive request for proposals process and they were chosen based on their methodology and their strong track record of conducting survey research for California municipalities. Dr. McClarny therefore does have direct experience working with the city of San Mateo and familiarity with our now years-long general plan update process that's been underway. Earlier this year, as you probably recall, council gave direction for staff to engage a professional research firm to conduct a statistically significant survey after the general plan was published and that's what we'll be reviewing tonight. And that survey, unlike our prior community surveys, was really meant to survey likely voters on the heights in the mixed-use high one and high two and the residential high one and high two land use categories, which council will be reviewing in further detail later tonight. Based on council's direction, city staff then re-engaged with True North Research to develop the survey and the questions were reviewed by staff from the city manager's office, the community development department, and the city attorney's office. And again, tonight, for this item, it's really meant to just be informational and following this, then council will receive a presentation from the full general plan team on the land use options that you'll be considering. But I also just want to provide some context, a reminder, as I'm sure you guys recall, that this survey is really just one of many options that we've been doing to engage residents and the entire community and the general plan process, which you'll hear more about after this item as well. With that, just a reminder, I'm available to answer questions. This is a great time for you to ask questions of Dr. McClarny after his presentation and of course, Acting Community Development Director Zach Dahl is here to answer any technical questions as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tim. Thanks.
Thank you, Samantha. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Dr. Tim McClarny, President of True North Research. We are affirmed that over the last 21 years, has specialized in working with California cities and other types of public agencies in the state and using surveys to develop a statistically reliable understanding of the communities and the customers that they serve. To date, my business partner and I, working together as a two-person team, have designed and conducted over 1,200 research studies for public agencies and more than 400 of those studies were community opinion surveys for California cities. I mention that just to provide some context during tonight's presentation or perhaps in response to questions from council, I may make reference to how the results we're seeing here might compare to what we've seen in a few other communities that have done surveys like this and so I just wanted to have you have a sense for the experience base from which I'd be speaking. I also welcome questions from council as I go or at the end, whichever is your preference. And tonight's PowerPoint really covers the key findings of the surveys, a much more detailed report that provides additional information beyond what we're going to be talking about here tonight. So with that, let me go ahead and jump in. Before we talk about the results, it's helpful to take a moment to review the methodology of the study or how we went about conducting this research. As Samantha mentioned, we focused this survey on likely voters, in this case, likely November 2024 voters, because one of the possible outcomes of this general plan update might be a measure that would be placed before voters in 2024, which would be required if you're going to make any adjustments to measure Y. And so we wanted to focus on those individuals who are likely to be casting ballots in that scenario. And so you have the November 2024 election, because it's a presidential, has a very large turnout. You have a little over 57,000 total voters in the community and we made eligible 52,000 of those voters for sampling purposes. Once we've identified likely November voters, we use a process called stratified and clustered random sampling and that is where we break down that likely voter population by all the variables that we know tend to relate to how voters vote on ballot measures. So things like age and gender, partisanship, household party type, as well as where they live within the community. Once we had done that, you build clusters that are multi-dimensional clusters and then you randomly select people into their appropriate clusters. And this ensures that, for example, with 5% of your likely November electorate are Democratic females who live with another Democrat or between 50 and 64 years of age and live in a particular part of the city, we ensure that 5% of our clusters represent that profile. And this is what allows us in today's day and age, where not everybody's going to agree to take the survey, not everyone's going to be reachable, we nevertheless end this data collection process with a sample that is in fact representative of your likely November base. Because there were a lot of visuals that we're going to be sharing as part of the survey, this was an online survey. We reached out using both email and text messages to individuals that were selected. The email and text messages had hyperlinks in them that had embedded PIN numbers so we knew who we were reaching out to to participate. If they clicked that link and came into their system, we knew who was on the other end of that click. That allows us to protect the survey so that only individuals who were invited to participate could do so and it also ensures that we're only getting one complete per person, right? Occasionally, when you reach out on topics like this, occasionally, some folks might decide that they want their opinion to count 10 times and so they'd like to take the survey 10 times. You can't do that with our system. Respondents had the option of participating English or Spanish and we wound up completing 635 interviews with a total November 2024 universe of a little over 52,000 individuals. We have a margin of error, in this case, of about plus or minus 3.9%. So what that means is, as we walk through tonight's results, we can be 95% confident that the results are within 3.9% of what we would have found had we spoken with all of your likely November voters. Okay, so on to the results. We actually opened up the survey with a couple of warm-up questions related to quality of life and the things that they'd like to change in the city and the things that they'd like to improve but or keep the same. But given tonight's topic, I want to focus in on the housing-related questions. And so right out of the gates, we open up with a little bit of a background information for respondent and we inform them that California state law requires that all cities plan for additional housing. And with a general shortage of housing in California, the state is requiring that the city of San Mateo plan for 7,015 new units by 2031 and it's expected that the state will require the city to plan for about 15,000 new units by 2041. And so understanding that the city is required by a lot of plan for thousands of new homes, the central question is, you know, where do we locate these new homes? And then we offered them two different alternatives. The first was new housing units should be concentrated in taller buildings in locations that are close to transit stores and restaurants such as downtown along El Camino Real and near Caltrain stations. Or new housing units should be spread throughout the city in medium-height buildings, which means allowing more units per parcel in existing residential neighborhoods with higher-density infill projects such as townhomes, condominiums, and low and mid-rise apartments. The reason why we open up with this intro is because there's a tendency, unless they understand, hey, we, we, there's no sort of, you know, we don't have any growth option here, right? That I, you know, you have to, you have this challenge as a city, you have to plan for these new housing units and so, you know, we want to make sure they understood that so that they're now kind of giving your, you know, understanding that that's the background, that they are more inclined to say, okay, if we've got to make a change, this is the change that I want to make. And you can see that initially, we had 48% of respondents choose the option for concentrating. You had 39% who preferred to spread the, the, the housing out and you had about 13% who prefer not to answer questions, were unsure, et cetera. This is pretty consistent with what we've seen in past surveys when we've asked this question. When push come to shove and they have to make a decision between concentrating and spread out, your community is divided, but they tend to lean toward concentrating. Now, the next few slides I'm going to show you are, show how the preferences varied across subgroups of San Mateo residents. And what you tended to find, as you might expect, if the overall preference was for concentrating, most subgroups preferred also to concentrate housing, but there were exceptions. So when you look at it, for example, by home type, which is in the middle group here, you see that individuals who are already living in multifamily housing, so duplex townhomes, condos, and apartments, they tended to lean toward spreading future housing out. Those living in single-family homes, on the other hand, had a strong preference for concentrating future housing. You also saw on gender that males were much more likely to favor concentrating. Females were a little more balanced between the two. When you look at it by rent and own, homeowners much more likely to favor concentrating. Renters lean towards spreading it out. And you also see from an ethnicity perspective, African-Americans and Latinos favored spreading out. The other groups tended to favor concentrating. This next slide shows it by age, presence of a senior in the home and council district. The younger voters, so voters under the age of 40, they tended to lean towards spreading it out, whereas the other groups were leaning towards concentrating. And you can also see that in council districts two and three, there was a lean towards spreading it out, whereas in the one and five, it was leaning towards concentrating and four was pretty evenly balanced. And then here we show it by mode use. All of those groups favored concentrating. By partisanship, also, they all favored either mildly or moderately towards concentrating. And then the last one is interesting. It's the anticipated years that individuals think that they're going to continue to live in the city of San Mateo. So how long do you, into the future, do you plan to continue to live in the city? Those who expected to live in the city less than five years longer, they favored spreading out at a much higher rate. Once you take over five years in terms of your anticipated future living in the city of San Mateo, you tend to lean towards concentrating, especially once you get to sort of 11 to 15 or 16 years or more. So that just gives you a sense of how, you know, again, the community's a bit divided on this issue. Overall, they lean towards concentrating, but there are some subgroups of residents who lean towards being spread out. So after that initial question, we had two follow-up, open-ended questions. For individuals who preferred to concentrate housing, we asked them why. And by open-ended, meaning we just asked the question and he got to tell us in their own words their response. We went back and reviewed those verbatim responses and grouped them into the categories that you see here. So at the top of the list, in terms of why those who chose concentrating prefer to concentrate future housing, they mentioned easier access to public transportation, about 21%. They felt that it would reduce traffic and fewer cars on the road because of that. It would allow future growth to occur while preserving existing neighborhoods at about 18%. And then others talked about how the new housing would be conveniently located, improve the walkability of the community and would also allow for better access to shopping and dining. For those who favored spreading housing out, we also asked an open-ended question about why. And you can see here, the top answer was really about just density, that they felt like it would create too much density in the community and they'd prefer to spread that out. They also had the, or the mindset that by spreading it out, you're going to reduce congestion by doing so at 21%. And then about 10% also mentioned that it would improve sort of diversity and integration within the community, both cultures and demographics. So at this point, after we'd gotten their initial opinions about concentrating versus spreading and we understood why, they got a, gave them a chance to tell us in their own words, we now start to dive deeper into the respective approaches, whether concentrating or spreading out. So I'm going to show the concentrating here first. And so we provided some background first to respondents, alerting them that in 2020, San Mateo voters renewed measure Y, which places limits on the height and density of buildings in the city. However, in order to meet state-manded requirements, state-mandated requirements for new housing, the city's draft general plan has identified 10 areas around the city where growth and change can be concentrated and concentrating growth in these areas, which are in proximity to transit, jobs, and services, would require amending measure Y in order to allow new mixed-use buildings to be taller and have higher residential densities than currently allowed if approved by voters. So we wanted to make sure they understood the context, that they understood that, you know, voters that approved measure Y and that concentrating strategy would require some adjustments to measure Y in certain areas. And so we then showed them this map and said it identifies 10 areas of San Mateo County, I mean, San Mateo, where building heights and densities could exceed existing limits through a voter-approved ballot measure and in order to concentrate future growth and change. And so we asked them to sort of stare at that map for a second. And we also then asked them, followed up with a question, that is, to be able to concentrate future housing in the areas identified in the map will require taller buildings and/or allowing more units per acre in these locations. And keeping this in mind, would they support or oppose allowing buildings up to eight stories in the blue area shown in the map? We also showed them what an example eight-story building looks like so that they have some concept. So those are the questions we asked in terms of the stories in the background and here are the results. So at, for eight-story buildings, at this point in the poll, we had 60% of respondents say that they would support that. You had about 36% who were opposed and about 4% who were unsure. Following that, we showed them a somewhat different map where you've got both blue and green parcels identified on the map and we asked them whether they would support or oppose buildings up to eight stories high in the blue locations, but allowing buildings up to 10 stories high in the green locations that are shown in the map. We also showed them an example of what a 10-story building could look like. And when you go to a mix of eight and 10 stories, support wanes a little bit. We had 52% support for that option, 45% opposed, and about 3% who were unsure. So all of this, to this point, was taken without sort of sharing arguments on one side or the other. But obviously, if you move forward with some type of measure in the future, there's going to be particularly one for concentrating, you know, there's going to be people out there saying, you know, we want to do this and here's why. So we wanted, after getting their initial opinions, sort of expose respondents to, on both strategies, both concentrating and spreading it out, to kind of arguments on behalf of each approach. And so we did that for the concentrating side by sharing with them each of the arguments on behalf of concentrating that you see there on the left. And we simply asked them, you know, do they think this is a very convincing, somewhat convincing, or not at all convincing, reason to support concentrating future housing? And you can see that there are a number of the messages on behalf of concentrating that resonate with a majority of the respondents we spoke with. At the top of the list, though, was by locating housing closer to transit. It's going to reduce vehicle trips, traffic and emissions while increasing transit use. And concentrating housing will help preserve land for parks and open space areas. So those were the most compelling arguments on behalf of that approach. So shifting gears, we also talked about spreading housing out in the city. And we said to be able to spread future housing throughout the city will require allowing more housing units per parcel in existing residential areas. Keeping this in mind, would they support or oppose allowing single-family homes to be redeveloped with up to six units per parcel first? And we showed them an example, image of what a six-unit building could look like with four facing forward and two facing backwards. So that's the image we showed and here were the results. You see a little more of an even divide when it comes to this strategy among your respondents. We had 49% who said that they would support that strategy for spreading future housing out. You have 47% who were opposed and about 5% who were unsure. Similarly, we also said, you know, reminded them again that spreading future house, future housing throughout the city is going to require allowing more housing units per parcel. And would they support or oppose allowing apartments and condominiums to be built in areas currently zoned for single-family homes? And we showed them an example of what an infill apartment building looks like, which you see here on this slide. And here again, we're seeing kind of an even divide in your respondents and your residents on this issue. 48% indicated they would support that type of infill development, 50% opposed, about 2% were unsure. Like we did for concentrated housing, we also shared some arguments on behalf of spreading housing out through the city to expose them to that side of the discussion as well. You can see here that the arguments on behalf of spreading housing out throughout the city don't sort of hit with the same impact that some of the positive arguments related to concentrating future housing did. The top arguments were it's going to provide a variety of new housing options in all neighborhoods, not just downtown or near transit, and it distributes new housing equitably throughout the city so that all neighborhoods will share the impacts of future growth. So those were the, the top two arguments on behalf of that strategy. So at this point in the survey, respondents have heard a lot more about the respective strategies than they did initially, right? When we initially hit them early in the survey, it was purposely designed to be, give them a little bit of information about the need to accommodate future housing and then ask them about their preferences with respect to concentrating or spreading out. Now they've had a chance to look at maps, they've had a chance to look at example buildings that would be involved. We've given them background on measure Y. We've also presented arguments on both sides of this issue. So we circle back with them and we say, now that you've heard a bit more, where do you stand? And what you see is that support ticks up a little bit for the concentration strategy, up about 3%. We're now sitting at about 51% who favor that approach. Support conversely goes down a little bit for the spreading out strategy. We're now sitting at about 35% and you've still got about 15% who aren't sure or prefer not to answer the question. Now, at the conclusion of the survey, again, recognizing that we've now talked a lot more about the respective strategies, we circled back to this question of building heights. We said, all right, now that you've heard more about the options the city's considering, would you support or oppose allowing buildings up to eight stories, up to 10 stories, up to 12 stories in locations that are close to transit stores and restaurants such as downtown along El Camino Real and near, near train stations? And so what you see here is that a willingness to consider taller buildings goes up now because again, they've heard a lot more about these strategies and the community in general sort of starts to lean more towards concentrating. And you see that for eight-story buildings, 72% checked in with support, 59% for these 10-story buildings. But at this point in the poll, we introduced the notion of 12 stories because in theory, if you had allowed the high-two option with density bonuses, it's possible that you could get a 12-story building, so we wanted to ask that as well. And support steps down as building heights go up. We're at 45% for buildings up to 12 stories. Okay, so before I get to the last slide, I want to provide a little context here. And that is, we've, you know, as Samantha mentioned, we've had the privilege of working with the city on past surveys and this topic of building heights has come up in the community, both in surveys as well as in a local measure periodically over the last three, four years. And so here's a quick recap of what we've seen. And the important part here, I want to emphasize, is that although the results vary over time here, what it shows is really context matters, right? Like what is the context in which this question's being asked and what information is being asked in the question? And that really helps understand how, over time, these numbers have moved around a bit. So back in January of 2020, so before the city had that measure Y renewal on the ballot, we did a survey where we asked individuals about their support for buildings of eight stories, 10, eight stories and 12 stories. This was taken with very, not a lot of background and context. It was taken in advance of this, you know, what became a much larger community discussion about building heights related to measure Y. And at the time, we saw that you had 65% support among residents for buildings up to eight stories and you had 52% support among residents for buildings up to 12 stories. Well, fast forward about nine months and you have a measure, you know, you've now got a measure Y renewal, measure on the ballot and you've had a lot of community discussion and debate and passionate feelings shared on both sides of this issue. And what you, we find on Election Day is that among voters, not residents, among voters and in the context of a ballot measure, measure Y renewals wins a renewal narrowly at about 50.5%. And so a lot of discussion and debate, you know, those, those types of campaigns tend to create their own little weather systems. And, and so when that happened, and again, in the context of a ballot measure, the community narrowly upheld keeping building heights where they are. So two years later, we did a survey for the city in 2022 related to the general plan update again. And here, what we were trying to test is sort of the, you know, where do, how, how much appetite or tolerance is there in the community for building heights under optimal conditions? And what I mean by that is, you know, if we were to convey all of the benefits of going higher with buildings without conveying any of the negatives, right? Where do we stand? And so we asked a question, I want to read it to you so you can get an understanding of what plays into those numbers. The question is, concentrating new housing in taller, higher-density buildings downtown and near transit would allow more land to be reserved for parks, recreation areas, and community amenities and will minimize change to existing residential neighborhoods. Knowing this, would you support or oppose concentrating future housing in high-density buildings up to eight stories and 12 stories? So you can see that the question itself includes all the benefits of going higher, right? So we're sort of trying to figure out, hi, how, how, how high can we go in terms of support for this option under that scenario? And you can see, support checks in at about 68% for eight stories and about 63% for 12 stories. Now, in this latest 2023 survey, which I just walked you through all those results, you can see we took a much deeper dive into these issues. We complete with maps, visuals of buildings. We talked about both strategies for concentrating as well as strategies for spreading out. We had arguments on behalf of each approach. And so when we, we spent an entire 15-minute survey talking about this issue and showing visuals. And what we saw is that initial support, right? Before we conveyed a lot of information, just where were they out of the natural? 60% for eight stories, 10, 52% for 10 stories. At the end of the survey, once we presented a lot of information, including arguments on behalf of both approaches, we, we saw that the support level for going higher goes up. And at eight stories, you jump about 12 points, you go from 60 to 72. You see also growth at 10 stories, not as much, right? So 52 to 59. And then we, again, we didn't ask 12 stories initially, we only asked it at the end after they had all that information and we check in at 45% there. So last slide. What does all this mean? Lot more detail in the full report, I'll keep it quick here. You know, as we talked about, when you sort of hand them the, the challenge of, we need to accommodate future housing, where does it go? They understand the challenge. Your residents tend to lean towards concentrating future housing as opposed to spreading it out. Once they've sort of considered all of the arguments on behalf of both approaches, they've looked at maps, they've understand what buildings of eight and 10 stories look like. We see that support for going higher strengthens a little bit, both for support for concentrating future housing increases, also support for going a bit higher on the buildings is fine. We did find very solid support for buildings between eight and 10 stories in the survey initially, but particularly towards the end, once they learn more. We did not find support, meaning majority support, for buildings up to 12 stories. And that was even at the end of the survey, when we had been, we saw that we'd already conveyed arguments on behalf of concentrating future, future housing. And so with that, let me end my presentation. I welcome questions from council if there are any.
Thank you so much. So questions from council, who would like to start? Please, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much. I have enjoyed listening to your surveys over the years and this is great, being able to get involved. Generally, you said that you have done this for other cities on similar topics and that generally, cities tend to concentrate, favor concentrating future housing. Can you speak to the subgroups? Were what you saw in our subgroups similar to what you've seen in other surveys?
So let me go back here to your subgroups. You know, it's not- You know, it's not really all that surprising when I look at your subgroups in terms of how they, how they react here. You know, folks that are already in multifamily housing, um, they tend to be more comfortable in general with that housing, but they also are probably located in areas of the city that will experience some of the more density. And also what you tend to find when you talk to people who are, who are, uh, in multifamily housing, they'd like to, if they're going to stay in that housing, they might prefer to be in a different part of the city. So you see that preference there. I think otherwise, when you look across these lists, you tend to see, you know, perhaps the folks that are, again, uh, going to, uh, going to be, uh, in the idea of like, hey, this is the kind of future housing that I might be in, right? Um, so for example, your renters versus your owners, your owners, they already own their home, they're probably not anticipating moving into these new units. And so they tend to have a, a preference for concentrating, whereas your, your renters are more likely the folks that are going to be going into these units. And there it's a little more mixed between concentrating and going higher. The, uh, the, I, it's hard to speak to the council district one because I don't know offhand and I don't have a map in my head about which district lines up with which of these areas offhand. You probably know that a lot better than I do, but I'm guessing that depending on where that concentration was happening, that might impact how, um, residents, so if, you know, if, for example, the, uh, you know, the, most of the concentration downtown was in a particular council district, that may sway individuals' opinions about, you know, whether they want to concentrate or spread out. The one that I thought was really interesting and we could, you know, I would actually, I'm not exactly sure why this pattern is, is the one on the far right here, which is the fact that you have, uh, individuals who don't plan to live in the city more than five years seem to have a strong preference for spreading housing out. Anybody who plans to live in the city for five years or longer into the future, uh, has a preference for concentrating. I, I don't, I'm not sure why that, that is as strong as it is. I'm sure that there's a renter owner dimension here as well, but, um, that one was really interesting. I will say that, you know, we've, you know, what you're going through is a challenge that other cities are going through and, and it's, there's no easy answer. You tend to do see some divisions, you tend to see divisions like we just walked through that kind of makes sense depending on, you know, what, where you sit as a, as a resident, do you own your property? Are you looking to move into one of these units or not, right? And so I don't see anything shocking here other than the one on the right, that, that one is sort of surprising.
Yeah, I, interesting. We could have a long discussion about that and, and I actually wasn't as surprised about the district results either, given housing types in various parts of our city. I was interested in the under 40 that was, had showed a preference for spreading out and what you might be able to spotlight about that result. Because, you know, just the, typically you think a lot of people want to be near transit, all those things.
I think you have a homeownership, I think you have a homeownership issue here, right? Cause if you look at the homeownership variable, just here, I mean, look how pronounced that is between owners, right? And versus renters, right? And so when you get to under 40, you're going to be, you're going to have a higher concentration of renters, less owners. And I, I make you bet that that's probably the larger part that's playing into that.
Okay. I, I was thinking that maybe it would be more concentrated because they didn't want to have a car, they wanted to be more urban focused, but we will, we will learn. And then you said that at the end that there was solid, that there, the last result was showing the pros and the cons. And I didn't hear you discussing any cons or if I didn't read anything in the survey.
Yeah, it wasn't so much a con as it was arguments on the other side, right? And so each one had, you know, respondents heard both arguments in favor of concentrating, right? And then they also heard arguments in favor of spreading out. And so I had pro con there, but it's really that we didn't so much argue against concentrating as there were arguments in favor of spreading out, which by extension could be thought of as arguing against concentrating.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. No more questions, Mayor.
Other questions from council? Please, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, through the mayor. Dr. McClarny, thank you for your presentation. I guess I was just a little curious about the reasoning behind presenting eight stories and 10 stories and the concentrated, uh, questions to begin with, sort of without the, some of the arguments and information perhaps. And then afterward, um, sharing eight, 10 and 12. Could you maybe elaborate a little as to why 12 comes in afterward?
Sure. So the, you know, we put it at two points in the survey because we want to understand where they initially, before we've shared all this information with maps and whatnot, right? And then where they, at the end, once they've kind of had the benefit of all that discussion. So that's why we do it that way. As far as the 12 stories, and I could, if I get this wrong, I, I would encourage city staff to correct me on this, but you know, one of the challenges you have here, as I understand it with H1 is you, you have building heights up to certain level. So it could be, um, you know, up to eight stories, up to 10 stories for H1, H2. However, then there's this density bonus concept where, you know, if it goes up to 10 stories, in theory, it can actually go to 12 stories because of these density bonuses. And the concern is, we want to be very transparent that, you know, when we talk about eight stories, it means eight stories. And when we talk about 10 stories, it means 10 stories. And because there was this option of, well, if you go H2, it could actually be 12 stories. That's why we tested 12 stories at the end because we wanted to get an understanding of how sensitive people would be to that building height. We didn't introduce it in the front because this whole notion of density bonus, everything I think would be, we got a lot going on in this survey and it could be confusing. So we stuck at eight and 10 and then eight and 10, and then we tested 12 at the very end just to see. Does that make sense?
I suppose so. Thank you. No further questions.
Councilmember Hedges, did you have questions?
No, I don't. I think this is very clear. I've gone over it very, very thoroughly. So I'm good with the answers that have been given so far.
Thank you, Tim, for your presentation. I think I just have two follow-up questions. One was, do we have any idea of the survey participants, how many of them participated in the vote for measure Y? Or the measure Y vote, I'm sorry, I should say.
No, um, we didn't ask that question. I have found in the past that when you ask people about their voting behavior going back a couple of years, it's not a particularly reliable answer. We do know, however, we, we can see what percentage of voters participated in that election, right? Um, now whether or not they voted on measure Y and how they voted, you know, we don't have any of that information, but we know if they actually cast a ballot in that election, it's going to be, I don't have that figure in front of me right now, but it's going to be a high, really high number because these are both presidential general elections. You have very high turnout in both environments. And although your electorate has changed a little bit, you've had people move in, you've had people move out, you've had people die, you've had people come of age within the community. You're, if you lined up your November 2020 electorate and your November 2024 electorate, they'd overlap pretty heavily. And so I'd expect most of the, certainly the vast majority of the people we spoke with did cast a ballot related to measure Y.
Okay, that's great. That's helpful. The other question was in, in pertains to, you know, people who were for spreading versus dense housing. Do, were they made aware of, I mean, they, they were given kind of an overview map, I see, but were they told that, for example, this, their district is, is three or their district is five and how many, you know, how many of these zones were in their district? And do you think that there is a trend, uh, that people are for more density when it's less impact on, on them, on their actual living district?
So there's no question that, you know, in general, right? If you, if you sort of take all of the things being equal, you tend to see that people will say, sure, I'm in favor of density as long as it's over there, right? In other words, I don't want it next to me. And that's, and so you do tend to see a little bit of that strategy. Now there's exceptions, right? There's some people who see the merits of concentrating and they don't, they think it's going to redevelop and revitalize their community, what have you. There's exceptions, but we tend to see that, that, that's a, that's a sort of a general rule of thumb. Now, again, I don't know how the map winds up with your respective council areas, but, you know, I, you, I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, the, the folks that are in existing neighborhoods that, you know, would, you know, are not interested, interested in preserving the character of those communities, that they're in this sort of, uh, lower density areas, that they're going to sort of lean towards concentrating, but, you know, doing it in areas that are downtown, next to transit, you know, away, away from the, and sort of preserving the existing neighborhoods.
Got it. All right. Thank you, Doctor. Appreciate the information.
Thank you.
No other questions.
Thank you. And for the purposes of our conversation, uh, it would help, I think, to have Zach, where's Zach? Oh, Zach, it would help to have Zach, um, clarify the, the definition of high one and high two.
Definitely. Zach Doll, interim community development director. So high one, this intensity occurs with both mixed use and residential. It would allow up to 130 units per acre and up to, and it has a height range of five to eight stories. High two, which also occurs with both mixed use and residential, allows up to a height range of six to 10 stories and would allow up to 200 units per acre. And, and one other piece to go along with that, because there was the factor of density bonus and the ability of projects to gain additional height, we were, we were factoring in potentially up to two additional stories in each zone. And so that's why initially there was discussions about a height range of eight to 12 stories, but we landed on high one and high two of the five to eight and the six to 10 because under, I guess, the most aggressive scenario, you could see buildings up to 10 stories in high one and up to 12 stories in high two. So that was a factor why both of those height ranges were dialed back to account for the possibility they could still go higher.
Thank you. And I guess I would just be curious, you know, Dr. McClarny, you, we know each other well at this point, several, several consulting gigs in. It would be really helpful if you could describe sort of your scope of expertise. Are you, you know, do you consider yourself a, you know, a ballot, uh, you know, a ballot expert? Or do you bring, uh, would you be, uh, for example, qualified in crafting a ballot measure? Is that part of your, your expertise that you bring?
Well, first and foremost, I'm a survey research expert, right? That's what I focus on. I, and I do it for a lot of public agencies and so research methods, survey methods, data science, that's my background. However, I have also worked on ballot, probably over 500 survey research studies related to ballot measures. I've had hundreds of measures go to ballot based on our research recommendations. A lot of those measures are revenue measures. So based on the research that I've proposed, we've raised, helped our public agencies raise over $35 billion in voter approved measures around the state. So I would say, first and foremost, survey research expert, but also I've, I've engaged on hundreds of ballot measure, uh, related efforts around the state. Usually, it's what's interesting is, although technically the 75-word ballot statements that go on the ballot, you know, ultimately are the city attorney or a, or bond counsel or whomever it is that's working on there that's an attorney. But typically the language follows the language that I, as a survey design specialist winds up starting with. So I sort of understand the, sort of the legal requirements of both measures. I take a crack at it, we go back and forth, the attorney and, and myself, and then we land on language that then goes on the ballot. You know, I would emphasize one thing though, which is none of the questions that we asked in the survey are 75-word ballot statements, right? At no point did we test a, a measure Y adjustment, right? Or revision in the space of these polls.
Thank, you know, thank you for making that explicit. And so, so you're seeing that, you know, the, the scope of this, I just want to make sure that we're tracking the scope of this, this effort was really to provide statistically valid research. We, at this point, you know, have an engaged ballot consultant, neutral third party to help test ballot language. That is, sounds like something that you have experienced with or, um, is that, was that, is that within your wheelhouse?
Yeah. I mean, if I had to, if I had to sort of make a division here, there's sort of community opinion survey, which is what we did here, where we're testing conceptually where people are at on building heights and, and how they want to accommodate future housing, et cetera. A ballot measure survey is a different animal. And that would, where you're testing a, a 75-word ballot statement with likely voters, usually in that context, you're going arguments pro and con and to see how they impact, you're testing it several times throughout the survey. We do a lot of those too, but we have not done that in relation to building heights in the city of San Mateo.
Thank you. I think that's helpful to, to delineate that, that important distinction in terms of, you know, what, what opportunities council might have to, you know, in next steps of defining, you know, what additional information we want to pursue and how we would go about getting it through a neutral third-party expert, producing some statistically valid data for us to consider. And so, and that this, this presentation is not that, right? This is one data point. I, I have to say, I was really shocked to see the amount of time that was spent evaluating the, the, the question of density spread out versus density concentrated. I don't recall our city, our council deliberations requesting that approach. And so I'm, I'm curious, if you could just elaborate some more on the justification and rationale behind that. I, and, and even getting, if you don't mind, getting into the, you know, the specificity about the, the images that were used, the, you know, six units per, um, six units per parcel, visuals and the infill housing, was that, that, was that, was that synced with a measure Y compliant, uh, evaluation that would spread density throughout the entire city? What was the basis for, for, for that line of questioning and, and those decision points?
So I might defer the images and whether the buildings are compliant with the, you know, H1, H2 to Zach since he's the planner, but let me take the first part of that question. Cause I, you're right that, you know, the notion of, you know, we were looking at H1, H2, and so why are we talking about spread out? I think it's really important when you're doing these type of surveys, when you're asking about, should we do this, meaning concentrating, they need to understand what the alternative is, right? In this case, if you just ask about concentrating, right? And they get the impression that a no means that I just don't have to go higher, almost like no means status quo, you'll tend to see a default to that, right? That they'll say, well, I don't want to go higher, so I'm going to say no. If you, by testing the two alternatives, first of all, some people may have a preference for spreading out, but the other part is by doing that, you help them understand that it's, you get to zig or you get to zag, right? You get to concentrate or you get to spread out, but you don't get to live in fantasy land where none of this has to occur, right? And so that's kind of the logic for, for spending time on both sides of this because not only are some folks going to argue for perhaps a spread out option, but we need to make sure that people understand that change is coming, you just get to pick your
And then through the mayor, Zach Doll, following up on what Dr. McClarny was saying there. The, um, the concentration versus spreading was built off of the discussion that we had had earlier on in the process that led to the creation of the study areas and the I- that led to the creation of the study areas and the, the notion that that was a balanced approach. And so it's, it's in a way almost kind of refreshing and reminding the discussion that got us to where we are, where we're now looking at this range of heights. And then in terms of the density spread out versus concentrated, yeah, that's an approximate number, but we're, we were looking at a scenario where if measure Y stays in place, how do we then still achieve the units we need to, to meet upcoming state housing and regional allocations? And so that was an approximate of what that could look like if we are spreading it out around the city. So that's where that name, number came from.
Interesting. So, so it, I hope that this is actually part of the community education process and then, and you know, as we go through the general plan. And I actually thought that the visuals could be very useful, that, that potentially, single-family homes would have to be up so in, you know, six units per parcel and with infill, you know, with, with apartment infill on, on the table. So the, the proponents of measure Y, who I think support low-density housing, would then be driving at a, a vision of the city that actually would make single-family homes obsolete. Okay. So my next question is, it seems to me that, you know, I was re-watching the last council meeting in April and a couple of council members took bets. They said, I bet, you know, my, my bet is that the, the community and the likely voters will not support high one or high two, and specifically not support high two. And so I just wanted to go through this again, because it seems to me that the majority of likely voters actually do support high two, which is defined as six to 10 units, which would be the column, the second column on this chart. So would you mind just refreshing the, the, the results as, just to make sure, because I think that when you actually presented the results, you were talking about density bonus and, and, and did not, your definition actually didn't align with the definitions, the working definition of high one and high two. So the definition of high one is five to eight stories and the definition of high two is six to 10 stories. So would you mind just reviewing that one more time?
I, I think the simple, you know, let me go back to this. I think the simple, and we talked about this staff and consultants when we were testing this to make sure, are we, are we testing everything we need to test? So if H1, high one, were five to eight stories, period, then, period, then you obviously have very strong support for up to eight stories at the end of the survey, right? If high two were six to 10 stories, period, right? Then you've got solid majority support for six to 10 at the end of the survey. However, this is where this concept of density bonus kept coming up. And I'm like, what are we talking about here? It's like, well, actually, six to 10 isn't six to 10. It's six to 10 and maybe up to 12. And so the idea was if the maybe up to 12 part or density bonus is part of H2, we need to understand how voters feel about the idea that 10 may mean 12, right? And so that's why we tested 12 on the far to say, look, you know, what if it's 12 stories? You could have somebody come in and, and wind up building 12 stories under H2. How do they feel about that? And that's where you see the comfort level goes way down, right? That's the motivation for testing the 12 is because H2, it's true, it's six to 10, but it's not six to 10, period. It's six to 10 and maybe with density bonus, we can get to 12 in some cases. So that was the logic behind testing it.
Interesting. And so, you know, one of the things that I thought was really, really advantageous and in the crafting of measure Y, P and H before it, was it actually created a specified community benefit program that would allow for greater heights with, you know, with, with, if a threshold for community benefit was met. Was that, and, you know, was that a line of questioning that was ever considered in terms of understanding the, the interests and how community benefit interests might align and allow for more, more height? Was that, was that something that was?
Not beyond the arguments on behalf of concentrating that you saw here. We didn't introduce the notion of density bonus in the survey. We didn't, in, in the sense of talking about it as a concept. We didn't explain why that would occur. It frankly was, you know, as, as I was listening to it and we were talking about it with consultants, I felt like that's, it's a detailed conversation that was probably going to be more confusing in the space of a survey than, than not, right? And that beyond the arguments on behalf of concentrating that we'd already said, we'd already kind of made the points of what the benefits of going higher, right? And what all the things it would do. I just felt like we're, we're already covering a lot of ground in this survey to go down that. That path was, you know, potentially going to be pretty confusing.
And maybe that's, you know, that's one of the things that a ballot consultant could, could look at in a future date. Okay, those are my questions.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can we take a five-minute recess before we start public comment?
Yes, absolutely. Let's take a five-minute recess.
If I could, through the mayor, I'd like to just clarify, we have no speaker slips in-house. We do have quite a few hands raised, and I wanted to be clear for the members on the remote meeting that we are on item number one, which is the opinion survey. Item number two is the general plan. If you had intended to comment on the general plan, please keep your hand up or lower them if you wanted to comment on the general plan and not this survey. So I'll give you a moment to do that, but I'd like you to also read into the record our rules around limited public comment. We welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised, this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic if speaking to a particular agenda item. Speakers must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned. And if they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. We in the city of San Mateo condemn hateful, anti-Semitic and racist speech in the strongest possible terms. At a time of rising antisemitism and hate speech, we do not stand for it. Hate speech can have real consequences. The country has had numerous mass shooting events, including at the Pulse nightclub in Orlando in 2016, the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh in 2018, and the Poe Shabbat in 2019. We embrace the rights of all individuals in our community to be who they are in terms of their sexuality, gender, religious orientation and beliefs, and we will always do so. So with that, we are going to now take a quick break. And if you could lower your hand if you do not intend to speak on the voter opinion survey on the draft general plan. Again, the general plan item is item number two. Thank you.
Welcome back, everyone. We welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised that this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic if speaking into a particular agenda item. Speakers must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned. If they continue to disregard these rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. We in the city of San Mateo condemn hateful, anti-Semitic and racist speech in the strongest possible terms. At a time with rising antisemitism and hate speech, we do not stand for it. Hate speech can have real consequences. The country has had numerous mass shooting events, including at the Pulse nightclub in Orlando in 2016, the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh in 2018, and the Poe Shabbat, the Poe Shabbat in 2019. We embrace the rights of all individuals in our community to be who they are in terms of their sexuality, gender, religious orientation and beliefs, and we will always do so. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
We have one in-house and 13 hands raised remote.
With Council's approval, can I suggest we limit public comment to one minute?
May I ask why?
Well, this is up for discussion and decision.
I would suggest that we have a very long agenda tonight, and we have a number of speakers online to give everybody a chance to say something, but stay focused. I would support the one minute.
I would prefer two minutes.
I'm okay with one minute.
I would prefer that we stay to one set of rules regarding public comment and timing.
It sounds like there's a comfort level of moving forward with one minute, but if we are okay, we could do one and a half minutes. No. Okay, then let's move forward with the one minute and see how that goes.
Okay, our first speaker in-house is Ed Evans.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Ed Evans, Carpenter's Local 217 of NorCal Carpenter's Union. Just here to concur with the findings of the study. We are, as a union, the carpenters are in favor of the, preferably the high-two option, but we do think that concentrating the future housing in taller buildings is the way to go. We're not going to get any more land to build out on, so we're going to have to go up. Another thing to consider is that building housing that way, building any kind of building that way, will actually be easier and faster. You won't have thousands of little rinky-dink construction projects spread throughout the city, going at different speeds, dependent on, you know, the cash flow of the owner. Some of those projects could sit dormant for years, and really, that's not what we need when we need to house, what is it? We need 15,000 units by 240 or 41. I think going high is the way to go. So, we're, the carpenters' union is in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker remotely, please go ahead.
Hi, yeah. Hello?
Hello.
Right, wonderful. Yeah, so I wanted to talk about the general plan. Had we set aside any no-nigger zones in the city? Because I think that would be the best, smartest move to create nigger-free, kike-free, whites-only zones.
Can you please stay on topic? This is for the survey results for the general plan?
Oh, right, yes, yeah. Because if you survey the white people, I think that most of them would want to expel all the niggers and Jews.
I think we're done. I'm going to remove you from the meeting now. Next speaker, please go ahead. You've been unmuted, please go ahead.
Hi, yes, when it comes to budget housing, we need to keep a few things in mind.
Can you please stay on topic with the survey results?
Yes, I'm talking about budget housing. The first thing we need to do is segregate whites and blacks.
Thank you. You're being removed from speaking.
Nigger. Nigger, nigger, nigger.
That is not on topic. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Hello? My life? Hi, I just wanted to say something about the housing for the minorities. You know, I really support it.
That's not on topic. This is for the survey results?
Yes, yes, but you were talking about ethnic distributions throughout the city, and I want to say that I support it. But my rabbi, he said that we shouldn't have schwatzes around three blocks within the synagogue because of our property values.
You're being removed. Next speaker, please go ahead.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, I just want to say fuck niggers.
You're being removed for not staying on topic. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Yes, I was just wondering in regards to the survey, if the information that was provided by the laser waffen boys was included about this land is our land, hail Hitler and hail the GDO, fucking niggers.
Please stay on topic for the survey. Thank you, you're being removed. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to speak about all these based people calling in. I just find it wonderful that they are so aware of the Jewish problem that we have and all the niggers invading us.
Thank you, please stay on topic for the survey. I am going to remove you now. I know, I know. The hand is shaking. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Mitch Spiegel, District 5, not a racist tool. To break it up a little bit, I just want to say I really did like this survey. I know that we've done quite a few throughout, you know, the process of this, but I just want to applaud both council and, you know, the doctor, I forget your last name, sir, but I thought the transparency was really important, right, about the heights and letting people know, you know, when you say a five-unit or an eight-unit or a story building, it really is going to mean probably 10 with density. And I really think that that was a powerful thing to put in there. So I just wanted to say that I appreciated that, and I think that our survey results are much more comprehensive of the city and our community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Hi, Dave Cohen, representing Ethics San Mateo, California nonprofit public benefit corporation. We don't take position in supporting or opposing specific issues. We're focused on ethical conduct by our city's leadership. With absolute respect and to Dr. McLareney and the work that he's done, we have some concerns about this survey, mainly in the development of the questions. We've asked, we've asked the city to provide us the scope of work, who developed the questions, how they were developed and all. We have a concern that activist members of council or commissions or, in government itself, and staff, had some influence to the questions that might have skewed the results. We now have the full results, we're going to be looking at them. However, our concern is that the results are used to support positions that may be outside the scope of what the intention of the survey should have been in finding actual factual information on what the residents of San Mateo.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Your time is up. The last speaker, just for the record, is Jenny Mitchell from Menlo Park. So, next speaker, please go ahead.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, great. I want to talk about that survey, so this is to do with the housing and building that big 16-story building that you're going to be filling full of niggers. I'm sure.
Thank you. You're not staying on topic, so we are removing your ability to comment on this. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Hi, is my mic working?
Yes, it is.
Okay, crazy calls tonight. So about the survey and the draft general plan of 2040, I think the results of the survey kind of give us an idea of where we want to go with this, and the buildings that we're going to be putting there, I think, should be turned into concentration camps to put all the kike.
Thank you, stay on topic. You're going to be removed. Next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Rudy Hess. I've been a resident of San Mateo for eight years. I represent the NSDAP, and this is part of the reason I moved out of Walkerville.
This is not, you need to stay on topic to the general plan survey results, please.
The survey results, the exact same thing is the reason I moved out of Walkerville was called. Sorry, I'm not sure.
Next speaker, please go ahead.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
So when it comes to these survey results on affordable housing, I just want to know, is there going to be Section 8 available? Because my black ass can't afford to feed my twelve kids to my twelve baby daddy.
Thank you, please stay on topic to the survey results. If you can't stay on the pod, I think you're going to. Next speaker.
Hi, this is Heather Cleary. I'm so sorry, you all, and we all are experiencing this tonight. Longtime San Mateo resident, current chair of San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce, and I wanted to thank you all for your comments at the beginning around intolerance for hate, and also for maintaining this privilege to speak remotely. I know it will be more discussion, but it's important for us to have opportunity to speak when we can't physically be there. Tonight, I appreciate the council's effort to gather and present this community data. Gives us good information to make thoughtful decisions about the future of housing in our city while fulfilling our mandates. We have a lot of good information to support next steps, including but not limited to proposed ballot language. And at the chamber, we are happy to help the council's efforts to further information gathering for voter language and ballot language. And thank you all for your service and for our high-quality process.
Thank you very much. Please go ahead.
Yes, hello, my name is Vera Black Singh, and I'm trying to figure out why there's so many houses being built very high like this, because I don't think that it's feasible. Americans have a lot of problems paying rent already, because BlackRock is swooping in there and making it impossible for the younger generations to buy houses. The company is owned by the Jews, and did you know that?
Thank you, sir, you need to stay on topic to the survey. I'm going to remove you from speaking. Next speaker, please.
I just want to say those previous callers are disgusting, but on the survey, I have to say those Jews give what they deserve in Israel, white fucking power.
That's not on topic, I'm removing you from the conversation. Next speaker.
Nigger, nigger, white power, gasp at Jews peacefully.
Thank you, this is not on the topic of the survey, I'm removing you from speaking. Next speaker, please go ahead, Sarah.
Good evening, Sarah Fields. I'm the chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, although I am speaking on behalf of myself this evening. I do just want to echo what Heather from the chamber had said, that, you know, the ability to speak remotely is really a gift. It makes these meetings significantly more accessible. Unfortunately, it does also make these meetings accessible to, in my opinion, and I hope several other people's opinions, really terrible people. And I don't have a great answer for you, except for to say that I think this is an important privilege that we should continue to figure out and to explore. I appreciate the mayor making her comments at the beginning. I also appreciate what Ed and the carpenters are doing, and agree, this survey was a meaningful and comprehensive look at San Mateo, and I appreciated the opportunity to give feedback, as I know many of my fellow Samitans did as well. Lastly, thank you, Patrice, for running this meeting with professionalism, as you always do.
Thank you. Our last speaker now is Jenny Michelle. Jenny, I'm going to allow you to talk. The two speakers who raised their hand after we announced last speaker, we will not be calling on you. So Naomi and Cameron Gilbert, we will not be calling on you. Ms. Jenny, please go ahead.
Yes, hi, good evening, mayor, vice mayor. I'm actually speaking on item number two, general plan. I'm Jenny Michelle, longtime Renton resident from Menlo Park, recovering homeless teacher, mother death of hard-of-hearing student.
That's on item number two, we're on item number one right now.
Oh, okay, I apologize. I will wait, I apologize.
Thank you so much. Okay, we are done with public comment.
Mayor, did you want to, did you want to break or keep going?
No, I can go on. Okay, so with that, we will close public comment and carry on. Councilmember Hedges, you would like to start?
Yes, I would. I am so upset with the kind of low-life statements we've had tonight. I cannot understand, these are the type of positions people take that create wars. I just, it's beyond me why we can live in a society where we have so much and have people hate other people. We have to find a way to stop this. I'm done.
I'm okay to continue. Do people need a break? I think it's important to check in. If you need a break, then we can take a break. Where are you? Okay, it looks like we will continue, continue on. So, this is a time for deliberation, council deliberation. We've heard public comment, we've had a time for questions. This is our opportunity to provide some feedback, but I don't believe there's a vote at this stage. It's really just for general direction.
Yes, thanks, Mary Lee, I'll clarify if you don't mind. So actually, we're just open to any other questions or comments you might have about the survey, but following this item, you will be able to have more of a discussion and hear from the general plan team.
Okay, so comments. Comments on the, on the survey. Who would like to start? Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you. I would first echo Councilmember Hedges's comments a moment ago, but then thanks staff for the presentation and the work, and to True North. I would also like to thank the mayor for, you know, and other councilmembers for sharing support for taking this survey and asking staff to conduct this. I think it's an important and useful piece of information to facilitate the other outreach and engagement we've conducted through the general plan process over a number of years. I am glad to have had a statistically significant survey of likely San Mateo voters throughout the city at this point in the process. The results appear to confirm, as some public commenters have noted, that the trajectory of the general plan update is still on track, though I know some in the room may have something to say more about that later in our next item. Thank you.
Anyone else? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, through the mayor. Number one, thank you to everyone on the True North team who did the survey. Thank you, Samantha. Thank you, Zach. Thank you. Thank you, Zach. Thank you, Prasanna, and everyone who was involved in putting the survey together. I think it's, it's always important to go out and have statistically significant surveys. And I think this is a really good way of doing it cleanly. I agree with True North that adding density bonus discussion in this survey would have been way too complicated and confusing. And I think the way that you decided to do it by putting in the 12 stories at the end was sort of an elegant, simple way to give people a chance to talk about it and to get their reaction. I don't agree that the majority of voters support H2 based on these survey results. Obviously, what happens in the general public when we vote could be a very different thing. But I read the results to say that there was the strongest support for H1. And there was lesser support, but still support for H2, which would have been H1 plus a density bonus. As opposed to saying 10 stories plus two. I think it was very clearly a drop off when you got to 12. That was my reading of the of the material. And I also support the mayor's recommendation to do ballot language testing, which is standard procedure. But I think it's important to with likely voters. And I look forward to learning about that as we go forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I agree with most of what Vice Mayor Lisa Nash said. I think this was a great poll. It's one of the best, I think, I've gone through. I thought you did a very good job in presenting the information without bias. I thought it was very interesting that you tested 12 stories. Because those of us that have worked to pass some of these measures have realized that 12 stories, if it's possible, be will be what is used by the opposition. And so I think that makes high two very doubtful in passing. I think probably we could view high one as the 59% and high two, if you'd have tested. And actually, you did by testing the 10 stories. So I'm very grateful that you did that. I thought that was foresight on your part. And thanks for a very good job. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsom.
Through the mayor. I concur with everything that's been said. I do feel it's important, you know, I I think that it was good that wasn't warranted to include density bonuses for the purposes of the survey. However, I think as we move it to testing it as a ballot measure, we need to make sure that we're we're not saying eight and allowing 10. We have to make sure that we're disclosing and being transparent. I still agree and maintain that I think that the majority will or will trend towards high one. I think H2, high two is doubtful to pass. Even though statistically it looks like it is, you know, if you look at what measure wise statistically would have done, it didn't pan out anywhere near that. So I think it's it's way too close. I think I'm leaning towards the high one. I also want to make sure that as we do further polling or in further surveys, that we make sure that we look at the spreading of housing versus density housing because I'm concerned that it's not as equitable. People, particularly in my district, where seven of the 10 zones for density are located, are going to be impacted more than people in other in other districts. And so I just want to make sure that we're doing whatever we can to make it an equitable trade off. That's my three comments. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you suggesting that that in future polling, we we routine the options and exploration of upzoning in single family homes?
I don't have a good answer. I think I have to think about it.
So then do you mind restating what you, what your last point was? Because I don't think I'm clear.
Well, it seems as though when you talk about, when you talk to people in different districts and you talk about, you show them a density map and you say, are you for a density, you know, higher density in certain areas? That if that isn't the the areas where those people live, they trend towards saying, of course, because it doesn't impact me. It's not in my backyard. So I just think it's important that we're very transparent with our mapping. And we're we're taking full consideration into how it impacts the people, you know, that in proximity to where the the dense zones are. I'm not saying that I, I'm not, I don't think we should have the density zones. I think in in general, it's a good idea. I'm just concerned that I want to make sure that no one feels like getting a raw deal.
So so maybe if I hear you correctly, you're saying that you want the district results broken out.
I think that would be helpful. That's a good way to look at it.
Okay, but but you're not specifically asking for polling on upzoning.
No, no, I'm not.
For single family homes. Okay, I just wanted to make that clear because if.
Madam Mayor, thank you for helping me clarify that, though. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Okay, well, I am, you know, I I've worked with True North or I've I've benefited from a lot of surveys over the many years from True North. And, you know, I think you, Dr. McClaren, he does, you know, really great work with his team. You know, from, I think that this is helpful data. And it's, you know, one more data point or multiple data points to get us closer to crafting what I hope will be a a very robust future poll for the the charter amendments. And having a, you know, a, a polling consultant and a somebody who has who has a neutral and third party expertise to lend to this effort, I think at this stage would be very helpful. And I appreciated Dr. McClaren's delineation of, you know, what what we're finding out here versus what we'll find out when we actually craft the ballot measure, when we do AB testing, when we figure out, you know, where there's support for what level of height and density. And so, you know, I appreciate the the effort and where we have arrived at this point. I think that there's still quite a lot of more research, statistically valid research, that will be very important to decision points on what we end up putting on the ballot. So with that, I think we can move on to our second agenda item. Thank you, Samantha. Our second agenda item is the draft general plan 2040 land use element introduction, glossary and community engagement summary. Our interim community development director, Zachary Dahl, is here and our our consultant principal with placeworks, Joanna Jensen. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Zach Dahl, interim director with the city's community development department. Here before you for a meeting of three of three to talk through our draft general plan. As we get started, want to acknowledge the team behind our general plan update effort, which has been working hard to get us to this point. And this includes both our core team here in the city of San Mateo, our technical advisory committee, which makes up, it represents all departments, including San Mateo Consolidated Fire, and our consultant team led by placeworks. So for tonight's agenda, we'll be just starting with our presentation, then available for any clarifying questions you may have. Then move to public comment and then on to council discussion and direction. And and for tonight's meeting, it'll focus on the introduction and glossary, as well as the land use element and map. But then any other recommended changes that you may have on the draft general plan as a whole. So to start us with the project overview, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Joanna Jensen, principal with placeworks.
Thank you, Zach. We always like to start our discussions of the general plan with just a reminder about the vision statement that was developed by the community earlier in the process and the five values that underlie that vision statement, including diversity, balance, inclusivity, prosperity and resiliency. Just a quick reminder about how we got to where we are tonight. Back in 2018, we started with the vision that I just gave a quick glimpse of. We then spent some time identifying the 10 study areas that we're going to talk about more tonight with an awareness of what was then measure P, now measure Y, and creating a range of land use alternatives for those study areas, which we then studied and evaluated and selected a preferred land use and circulation scenario. We developed goals, policies and actions to support those scenarios and shared those with the community, planning commission and council and GPS, and then worked to prepare the draft general plan. We published the draft general plan earlier this summer and we did a significant outreach that I'll talk a little bit more about in this presentation. We held meetings of the general plan subcommittee or GPS, planning commission, and now tonight, our third of three meetings with the council. During that same time, we also had the draft EIR or DEIR published on the general plan. And that was available for a 45 day public comment period in August and September. Coming up next, as you can see on the schedule, we are going to be working to incorporate the direction that we received from council at the past three meetings and publish the final general plan and final EIR in early 2024. Then come back to the planning commission and the city council for adoption and certification hearings in February and March. During this time, while we have the draft EIR and the draft general plan out for public review, we've worked very hard to make a number of resources available online at strive-sanmateo.org. So I would encourage anyone in the community, anyone in the audience who hasn't visited this webpage to please check it out. There are a lot of tools here to help orient you to the process and to these important documents. Strive-sanmateo.org. Having reviewed some of our past milestones, I just wanted to take a moment and revisit the topic of growth projections and the general plan and how some of those growth projections showed up in previous steps and what their implications are for the general plan that you're considering tonight. So growth projections were really important step when we were doing the alternatives evaluation and when we were doing the draft EIR because we need some numbers to compare possible outcomes. There are a number of topics, especially in the EIR, that require quantitative modeling, such as the transportation analysis, the air quality emissions, the noise contours. And so we need to have a concrete number of of development outcomes that we're evaluating with those quantitative tools. They're important for the analysis and the analysis is required by law. However, the analysis that we do in the EIR is not the same as the general plan. And the analysis that we do in the EIR does not set the policy. Your general plan sets your policy. The draft EIR is about studying an envelope of expected but conservative development and being able to assess and give you a sense of what the physical impacts to the environment might be from that development. The general plan, on the other hand, is a regulatory document that allows growth, but it does not mandate growth. It does not establish certain requirements for a pace or an amount of growth. It does not include any targets for growth. It lays the groundwork and sets the policy, or like we say sometimes, sets the table for what San Mateo is going to allow. Then what change or growth actually happens is really driven by market influences. It's driven by private property owner decisions. It's driven by a number of factors that are not all within the city's control. So I wanted to be really clear about growth projections because they have been a very important part of our process, but they are not part of the general plan itself. So let's talk a little bit about what is in the draft general plan. You've seen these before. We've been talking about the draft general plan and some of the 10 big ideas that we're very excited about that came out of the general plan update process. Tonight, I want to make sure to acknowledge very explicitly that much of the general plan content and including these 10 big ideas are carried forward from the existing general plan that's currently in place. So we started from your 2030 general plan in developing the content for the new general plan. And a lot of the very important ideas that are in the this draft general plan are also in your existing general plan. Things like balancing growth and change, protecting neighborhood fabric and quality of life, protecting nature as the foundation of the city, supporting the local economy, addressing historic preservation. All of those are very foundational and important ideas in your general plan today that are also strongly represented and enhanced and embellished upon in the existing, excuse me, in the 2040 general plan. And the general plan that we're updating is also an opportunity to consider new policy direction and reflect some of the ideas that have emerged in the community since 2010. So encouraging always to travel around the city, initiating a comprehensive sea level rise strategy, focusing on equity. All of these are additional ideas that the new general plan really adds to some of the great ideas that were in the old general plan in response to what we heard through our community outreach. The general plan has these elements, and tonight we're going to be focusing really on land use. It also has these other important components, and we're also going to touch on the introduction and the glossary tonight. Throughout general plan 2040, there are three key themes woven into every element. Those are sustainability, environmental justice and community engagement. And to make sure that we're really highlighting those themes throughout, we have used the graphic design and layout of the general plan to provide these icons that you see on this slide to help readers find the policies and actions that are connected with each one of those important three themes. While we're looking at the pages of the general plan, also just wanted to take a moment and acknowledge that really improving the usability, the readability, and therefore the transparency of the general plan has been a very important motivator for us as we package this into a draft document to share with you and with the community. So this slide kind of gives you a sense side by side of the evolution of the document from the current 2030 general plan to the the updated new general plan for 2040. I also wanted to say a little bit more about community outreach, which has been an incredibly important component of this project from its inception. We have been taking public input through a number of channels during the draft general plan review, including an online comment tool, visiting pop up events, holding a virtual workshop. As you know, of course, town hall meetings in each one of the five council districts, staff presentations to various local organization, and of course, accepting written comments, which we're very grateful for everyone to taking the time to come to these meetings and to provide us with comments through all these different channels. We got the word out through a wide variety of different options, including, of course, the project website. It's strive-sanmateo.org. But self guided open house, like the one that's in our lobby outside this room right now, postcards, sidewalk decals, print advertisements, canvassing and flyer distribution, a number of different tools to try to make sure we're reaching everyone possible so that everyone understands that the draft general plan is happening. We also did some targeted outreach to San Mateo's equity priority communities, partnering with PCRC, the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center, and Good City, distributing flyers, visiting religious institutions and the adult school, food distribution events, and making sure that we're going to these communities that are affected by the general plan in addition to the five town halls throughout the city. These two tables on these two slides just give you a quick snapshot of all of the events dating back to mid July and a sense of the number of participants that we were able to reach at all of these events. Some of these are in person, some of these are phone calls. You can just get a sense of the real strong effort that we did to reach people throughout San Mateo in a number of different ways. We've also been collecting demographic information voluntarily from folks that we engage with at many of these events. And look, we look back at our data from since October, excuse me, since August 2021. So that's what these statistics are reporting. So over that couple of year period, the people we interacted with, about 44% of them. about 44% of them, at the time they filled out the survey, said they were new to the process and this is their first time at the general plan meeting. So that was, that's always great. We love to reach new people even at this point in the process. 56% of the people, on the other hand, are familiar, they're plugged in, they're coming back, and they're remaining engaged. So we really appreciate that as well. Email and social media were one of the top ways that people reported hearing about these events. About 75% of the people that we've heard from since August 2021 were homeowners. 25% were renters. Renters make up about 45% of San Mateo in comparison. And so we do like to understand how are the folks that are reporting voluntarily their demographics to us in general? We had more representation from white residents, higher income residents, and residents over 41-year-olds compared to the statistics for the city population as a whole. So just briefly, talking about the components of the general plan tonight, we wanted to give you an opportunity to have any comments on the introduction and glossary. These don't provide regulation in the same way that the elements do, but they're really important components of the plan itself in terms of helping readers be oriented and understand what they're looking at. So the introduction explains what is a general plan, what is the planning context for San Mateo, what's in the general plan document itself, what do we mean by equity priority communities and why is this in the plan? And how will the plan be implemented? And then, of course, the glossary is a glossary. So when we ask folks about the general plan and community input that we got, asked us to make sure that we're explaining a little bit more about how the 2040 general plan differs from the existing general plan, continue to increase outreach to bilingual households, clearly define sustainability as well as what is considered transit accessible and what community means. Staff does have a couple of recommendations in your packet. So we want to propose to update the big ideas and equity priority communities and add a little bit more narrative about the existing general plan and how that's reflected. We also have a couple of changes to glossary definitions for story and active transportation and propose removing disability from the glossary since it's not used in the general plan. And with that, I'm going to turn this back over to Zach to explain a little bit about the land use element.
Great. Thank you, Joanna. So moving on to the land use element, this is probably our largest and most diverse element in terms of the range of topics that it covers. Balanced orally and equitable growth, where our land uses go, focus area on our, on some key study areas, including downtown, our El Camino Real corridor, and the Hillsdale Station area. This is also the element where we cover environmental justice, community engagement, climate change and sustainability, economic development, as well as then some more nuts and bolts such as our development review process, regional cooperation, and how the general plan is maintained over time. So a key component of the land use element is the land use map. And this is really, I mean, this is probably one of the more talked about elements of the general plan. And it really outlines our blueprint for where we're envisioning growth and change over the coming two decades. And so this sets parameters for different types of uses and at what intensity they can occur. And it helps implement the city's overall general plan vision. As, as we've talked about, we have focused on the creation of 10 study areas. And in the context of our city, these would be the areas where we would see the majority of our growth and change over the next 20 years. These are areas that are in proximity to transit, service, and jobs. And there are areas that are, that are more opportunities. They have older buildings, underutilized parcels, and we also have developers that have, or property owners that have expressed interest in these areas. Another piece as part of our environmental justice component is our equity priority communities. And in this case, this is where we have a confluence of pollution burden and other socioeconomic factors such as low, lower income. And when these two come together, they're identified as an equity priority community. And these parameters were set by state legislation SB 1000. Within the city of San Mateo, we've identified two areas, our North Central Neighborhood and our North Shoreview Shoreview Neighborhoods. And so as part of this, we have been collecting community input. We've received a variety of input, and in some cases, on both sides of the spectrum. There was a strong theme for supporting and how we can maintain our local businesses and our neighborhoods serving commercial and retail areas, ensuring that we will have sufficient services, in particular, commercial and services, to support our future growth. And in terms of Measure Y, we have heard support for moving beyond it, but then also a lot of voices who have spoken in terms of maintaining Measure Y. We've also heard a range of inputs on where density should go and whether it should be concentrated or whether it should be increased within our single-family neighborhoods. We've also had input on climate change and also whether we should, what types of uses, including office, and if we have sufficient demand to support what is already being built. As part of our process, we took the general plan before our general plan subcommittee. There was a variety of comments focused on the land use element. This was looking at the language around Policy 1.9, which aligns with how the general plan works within the Measure Y context, updating Action LU 8.4 with regard to city investments, how we would look at some of our environmental justice policies, and then also looking at how we could support future land acquisition for the city. And so, and in terms of the Planning Commission, they also reviewed the entire document and provided a variety of recommendations with regard to the land use element. There was a focused discussion on air pollution and potential impacts on new residential development, in particular in Study Areas 7 and 8, as these have a number of sites that are directly adjacent to our 101 and 92 corridors. Also looking at ways we could retain local businesses, and then also other ways to support environmental justice, such as environment, neighborhood beautification, inclusive outreach, and also maybe revisiting our fiscal neutrality policy. Based on all of this input, and this is community input, general plan subcommittee input, Planning Commission input, and how that input aligns with House Council direction, staff has made a variety of recommended changes, both to the land use element and the land use map, which I'll speak to in a moment. These, the majority of these recommended changes focus on how we can strengthen our policies for neighborhood-serving commercial and our service commercial area, which include a variety of local services that are beneficial to our community and a great source for local businesses and local jobs. We do have, and this will come up a bit later, but there are two policies here, and I'll come back to these at the end, that are new, but I wanted to bring them for council consideration here this evening. Moving to the land use map, we did want to highlight a number of recommended changes here. The first five are functionally more in the category of cleanups, making sure that the land uses aligned with the existing uses, when these are uses that may be maintained throughout the general plan period. We also want to note the removal of the Waypoint Church parking lot from Study Area 3. That's Change ID 5. And then two other recommendations I wanted to spend a bit more time on. The first one is the, the service commercial area, which currently exists along Palm Avenue between Trenta Park to the north down to 25th Avenue. In all three of our alternatives, this area was identified as being maintained as service commercial. This is a good concentration of service commercial uses. And these are uses that aren't necessarily compatible with other uses, especially residential uses. And so maintaining concentrations is an important way to ensure that these, these areas can survive and thrive over a period of time. This is also adjacent to the rail corridor. So then again, not necessarily the most ideal place to place new housing. And so during the course of the preferred scenario selection, this, the land use of mixed-use medium 2 was recommended for this corridor. But in light of the community outreach we've had over the summer and a renewed emphasis on how we can support local commercial and service commercial businesses, staff is recommending that this, this section be re-designated as service commercial to support the existing businesses that operate here. And the other one is in Study Area 7. And this stems from the pollution source discussion that originated in the Planning Commission and, and the idea of our concerns about increasing residential density within that 500 or 1,000-foot buffer along our highway corridors because they are high pollution sources and can have negative health effects on residents who live in proximity over time. And so in Study Area 7, we do have a corridor of properties currently designated as resident, as multifamily high in our current general plan and allow up to 50 units an acre. In our prefer, in the preferred land use scenario, these were envisioned as going up to 99 units an acre. But based on, on the input from the Planning Commission and looking more closely at the adjacencies, these are adjacent to lower-density neighborhoods in North Central and North Shoreview. Staff is recommending that these areas be reduced down to residential medium 1, which would align with the current density that allows up to 50 units an acre. We do also have two specific land use map requests that were submitted. This was after publication of the agenda. The first one is related to two parcels on Campus Drive, 2929 and 2955. We received a request from the property owner there with an interest in maintaining the office use. They noted significant investment in that office use there, and they do not envision it transitioning to residential in the near term. And so with that request, they did request an office high. And so you can see office high allows three to five stories. And it, the office designations do allow for residential. So even with an office designation, housing could still occur in the future if there's property owner interest at that time. And so based on the surrounding context here, we are recommending, staff would recommend re-designating these two parcels to office medium to align with the existing uses and the owner's request. And then also, long-term, if there were redevelopment, that level of density would be appropriate for this area. And you can see it does align with the office across the way on Clearview, just below San Mateo College. The other request was not necessarily a specific parcel, but that we adjust the minimum densities in two categories. And this would, the letter noted, this would allow for potential townhome or lower-density multifamily, which is a key missing middle component as this is, these can be ownership-type units. And so based on this input, staff reviewed the two designations, which were office medium and mixed-use medium 1. And so based on that input, looking closely at it, staff would recommend that mixed-use medium 1, the low end be dropped from 36 down to 20. The app, the requestor had noted 15, but 20 aligns with our next tier down, which would be our residential low 2. And so because mixed-use medium does occur around the city and some places closer to transit, we recognize the opportunity to go low, but 20 appeared like a more appropriate floor for the mixed-use designation. For the two office designations, we actually looked at both office low and office medium and identified opportunity here. Given these are generally existing office environments and maybe partial portions of the site would be, transfer, would, might be converted in the future, we saw these as both opportunities to set ceilings but not floors. And so we would recommend in both office low and office medium, we change the language to read up to 35 units per acre and up to 50 units per acre to allow for flexibility and envision any number of different types of projects that might occur, maybe with office being maintained on a portion and then housing on another. So moving to, and this aligns with our, the earlier discussion topic about High 1 and High 2. These two discussions, this was an earlier council discussion, and so we are bringing this back as, as we will be looking to counsel for direction on, on what to do with the High 1 and High 2 categories on our land use map. And so really, these, these intensities exist both for residential and within mixed use. And you can see the different ranges that exist, both in terms of densities and heights. And so with the High 1 and High 2 designations, this stems back to the council discussion we had this past April. We did keep High 2 for the purposes of including it in our environmental impact report analysis. And then we did move forward with our statistically significant survey to gauge where the community is at with both of these designations, and then in particular, the heights associated. We do want to note that for the High 2 designation, we have approximately 231 parcels around the city that currently have this designation on the draft land use map, and that's out of over 24,000 parcels citywide. And then also, if a High 2 were to be removed, we're estimating that would reduce the 20-year build-out by approximately 1,000 units. But also, we just want to note that per what Joanna outlined earlier, these are parameters and that there's a number of factors that will ultimately influence the growth we see in the coming decades. And then we do also, one other thing to note was we, following council direction from that April meeting, we did make a number of adjustments along the edges of our study areas to support transitions or buffer zones where maybe we dial down by one level of intensity to kind of transition between higher-density areas and lower-density neighborhoods. And so we do want to note that there'll likely be some reduced 2040 build-out capacity that resulted from those changes as well. So we have, over the weekend and today, received numerous public comments. Really focused, I think, on, and we can see some of the themes. So we do want to acknowledge that input we've been receiving recently since it did come after the publication of our agenda report. So a number of themes there included support for Measure Y and maintaining our current heights and densities of five stories, 55 feet, and 50 units per acre, noting that housing density bonuses should be reflected in the ranges we show in our land use designations, need for more understanding of the fiscal impacts of this projected growth, concern about public services and infrastructure being maintained concurrently with this increased growth, and also noting more recent state demographic projections and that the general plan may be inconsistent with where those projections are, looking at the state growth over the next 10 years. We did also want to provide some responses to some of that input for your consideration. And I think first and foremost, Measure Y is a voter-adopted initiative, and any changes that may be coming from this general plan would need to go back to the voters before anything could go into place. We also did want to note that the height ranges were adjusted to factor in potentially, potential density bonus height concessions. And we had touched on it, the notion that originally for our high categories, looking at eight to 12, but then adjusting those limits down, knowing that density bonus could, could push them higher, even if we set a lower threshold. So we did want to account for that in the ranges that moved forward. We also want to note that statewide demographic projections are exactly that. They're statewide and that we would want to be calibrating our decisions on, on what's going on more locally within the Bay Area and even more locally within the Peninsula and here within the San Mateo County context. And within this more local context, we do know that, that housing is a very real need, in particular affordable housing. And this, regardless of where our growth may go, this is a need right here, right now, for our current population. This is also a major need for our businesses because our businesses need workers. And right now, our workforce doesn't, doesn't have the opportunity for housing that they necessarily need. And that then makes it harder for businesses to hire the workers they need. It also has an impact on younger people and families being able to stay here in the community. And so we also want to note, the general plan is a lot more than just the height and density discussion before you. And it's intended to be comprehensive. And so as we, we look at these growth projections or potential new development that occur, we're also have a suite of policies that look at how we can address issues like safety, traffic congestion, services and infrastructure, and quality of life. So all of those are being addressed concurrently as we move forward. We do also have a variety of other staff recommendations that we wanted to highlight and bring before you since this is our last meeting to discuss the draft general plan. At an earlier meeting, there was, there was council interest in strengthening our language around kind of culture and entertainment. And so we did include a variety of text changes to kind of strengthen that position and give ourselves a stronger foundation as we develop more focused policies. And so you can see the range of policies and actions that we're recommending some increased text, or some text changes to better reflect this theme. We also wanted to include a couple of explicit references for pedestrian safety when crossing El Camino Real because that is a theme we've heard from a variety of places. So we did identify two policies in an action where we just wanted to include a specific reference to traversing, for pedestrians traversing El Camino Real. Also, another topic that we've heard a lot about recently, this started with the Planning Commission and this discussion has been ongoing, is air quality and placing residential uses in close proximity to our two highway corridors, which are our pollution sources. We do want to bring attention to the variety, several policies and actions that were already in the general plan that were developed with the intention of helping to mitigate these impacts when they exist. And so this is And so this is air, related to air quality thresholds, when we may require a health risk assessment for new development, how we would look at, at addressing toxic air contaminants, and then overall, how we could look at ways to improve air quality. We also do have two recommended updates. One would be with regard to air pollution exposure. And we did want to recommend two specific text changes, and these speak to how residential developments in close proximity, the, both indoor and outdoor air quality could be addressed as part of these new project proposals. And then the other one, which was actually council-supported earlier this month, but we wanted to bring attention to it, was looking specifically at outdoor air quality mitigations and, and different ways that we could help address that for open space areas in proximity to our highways. So moving forward to next steps, this is our, our last meeting on the draft general plan, and then based on the input and direction we were here tonight, we'll move forward with publishing our final general plan and our final environmental impact report beginning of 2024, and then that will move forward with adoption hearings before our planning commission and council. And so for tonight's discussion, it will focus on the introduction and glossary and then the land use element and land use map, and, and specifically, is there council support for the recommended revisions? Those are both the ones included in your agenda packet, as well as, as the ones articulated in this presentation this evening. And then is there any other changes or updates that council would like to see incorporated into these sections of the general plan? So with that, that does conclude staff's presentation, and, and we are available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Director Dahl. Who would like to start with council questions? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, through the mayor. Let's see. Thank you, Deputy Director Dahl, and the entire team that's been involved in this so much, Joanna and team. So one of the questions I have is that many of the emails we received from the public questioned the growth projections of our general plan, given you, you brought up that we are local versus state projections, but even in San Mateo County, there was a point out that there would be local, low or negative of growth over the next decade. And I'm wondering if there's a way that we could incorporate an annual check-in on our general plan, so that every year at a certain time, staff would come to council and the public and say, here's what we said it would be like, here's what we said we were going to do, here's what's actually happening in terms of the numbers for population or whatever, and here's what's happening in terms of growth and our actions, so that we can be more accountable. Is that something that could be incorporated?
Absolutely, and, and it is actually a piece of the general plan already, and I think this will be a good annual forum to have that type of discussion. And so each year in March, we bring forward our annual progress report on our housing element, which is required under state law. And now, we are also doing an annual progress report on implementation of our land use element. This is also a state law requirement, not with the same teeth as, teeth as our housing element, but it is something the state requires an annual report on. And then in addition, we also have a policy where we'll be reporting, providing an annual update on growth. How many new units, how many new square feet of commercial did we approve or did get constructed over the past year? So we envision all three of those topics coming to council each year, and so those, those would be a great opportunity to kind of check in and see where we're at and, and talk through if, if we need to make any adjustments to our general plan.
Right, because the general plan can be changed.
Absolutely. The general plan is a living document, and, and we routinely amend it over the course of its lifespan.
Thank you. My next question, we've had a lot of talk tonight about heights and density and numbers, but as I think you've already mentioned, there's an underlying community concern about the impact of those numbers on the quality of life, that if we could somehow magically make all traffic go away, there might be more openness to doing other things, but that's not going to happen. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we can tie heights and densities to solving real community problems, whether it's additional affordable housing, or really making Hillsdale Boulevard safe by doing the crossover we've always talked about. So in measure Y right now, there is the opportunity to increase above 55 feet if there's commensurate community benefit. And I know we're going to be redoing our community benefit program or updating it. So I would be really interested in, in staff going away and coming back with some recommendations about how we can update those, so that we can have a targeted height incentive if there really is commensurate community benefit. Is that the kind of thing that could be worked into the, the community benefit program?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, something similar to what's in measure Y right now. I think, given the changing context and the changing legislative framework within the state, we, we've identified the need to update where our community benefits program exists, because right now, it, it isn't really functional. But we are moving forward with a project to look at how we could update it, both within density bonus, also looking at minimum densities and mixed use, and how we can update our community benefits program to actually be effective and have a path to potentially realizing community benefits. And so updating it to align it with the way measure Y envisions it now could absolutely happen. And that is something that we are underway with a consultant onboard, and we do anticipate having a, a community discussion on that community benefits program and what potential opportunities could exist there in 2024.
Great. That, I think that will be a very good discussion, because there may be targeted opportunities to really tie development with solving a problem that exists today, and that's what I'm interested in. Related to, I guess my question is, is this part of the general plan, that we are focused on circulation? How do we talk about development, but where do we talk about mitigating the impact of development? And we're going to have so many different buildings and developments, hopefully, being constructed at the same time, that we need to have a focus on how do we mitigate that impact, not just the, the impact of individually isolated buildings or developments? Does that happen in the general plan, or is that someplace else?
That generally is someplace, yes, but it's absolutely right. I mean, when, when we, when construction projects start, having a strong construction management approach, that the city can work closely with developers as they move forward is absolutely essential. So especially when you do have more than one project going on at the same time. And so that'll be a really important piece that the city will need to develop and be prepared. So as projects move forward, we're able to minimize to the degree that it's possible impacts on, on adjacent properties and residents as we go through a construction process on any given site, or if we have an area that's, that's seeing multiple projects at one time. So it's absolutely essential to maintaining quality of life and ensuring that it's as smooth as it can be, because construction is disruptive. But there, there are definitely ways to get ahead of it and ensure that it's minimized and, and developers and contractors are held accountable to do their part during the process.
Yeah, very much so. We received a number of comments about AB 1287, and asserting that it would allow developers to increase their, what they could build by 100%. I'm not personally as familiar with that, but I'd appreciate your, your feedback on, on that statement.
Definitely, and, and I haven't had a chance to do a deep dive into it, but in doing an initial review of AB 1287, I didn't identify anything that identified increasing either concessions or density bonuses beyond what's currently allowed under state law. But what we did identify was, actually, this is a potential opportunity here where there is a change, where now, as opposed to projects just having to provide affordable units off of the base density, it would be off of a total projects number. And so I think that would be really beneficial here in San Mateo, where we've seen projects provide 15% of their base density, but then with the density bonus units, it functions more as 10%. And so this would be an opportunity to get a true 15% off the total unit. So we didn't see anything that it saw an increase in concessions or density bonus, but we did identify a potential positive out of that legislation for, for additional affordable housing that could be realized.
Thank you. That's, that's good clarification. And I also saw some comments requesting that we not rezone service commercial, service commercial slash light and manufacturing on South Amflid, because it would introduce a lot more trucks and et cetera, and I, I wonder what your opinion is on that.
So this is, is much recognizing existing uses. Adding the term light industrial is really used to clarify that this is a zone that really isn't necessarily meant to mix other uses into. And, and we do see where different pieces of state legislation are looking at, I, opening up commercial areas. And so by identifying this as service commercial slash light industrial, we're not introducing new uses into this category, but we're signifying that this is really not an area that we would want to intermingle with housing units. And so that's really the intent by adding that clarification, is just reaffirming for, for commercial, for service commercial, this isn't necessarily an area that could be intermingled or have housing on top of it, because we've got automotive uses, we've got prefabrication, other types of uses already. So this change wouldn't change allowable uses or what currently goes on there, but it reaffirms that this is the mix of uses we want there, and we're not necessarily looking to open up these zones.
Great, thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. Zach, we've been discussing the number three, but, or number seven, rather, about downzoning. But let's talk about A, because it's actually more impacted by freeway than that particular area. You have the flyover on 92 to 101, and then both, both freeways coming together. Wouldn't it make sense for health reasons, since we already have a project on one of the, one, two, three, four, four parcels that could, that's part of that study area, to downzone that at least to the units that are going to be already built, a 75 units per acre? I think that would also accommodate one of the, one of those areas over in District Three on, along Amflid. So I would like to see a downzoning of that, and I have some family history on that. One of the issues is the long-term exposure to these hydrocarbons and the other affluents that come off of, of automobiles and trucks can cause breast cancer. And my wife recently suffered breast cancer after living by this highway for 54 years. And so I have a real life version of what possibly could have caused it, since there's no family history of that. So I think it's a real issue, and I'm happy it's come to four. Once again, it's not the first time that it's been around. So not asking for extreme reduction, but a partial reduction, along with what we did with number seven. That would be one of my issues. The other one is simply something that we haven't even talked about, but the possibility of having a west side access to the Hillsdale Caltrain Station. We have a lot of possibility of housing along that area. In fact, there's one development that's already been approved near the Caltrain Station that's fairly large, between 27th and 28th on El Camino, and, but not yet built. But people that live in the below market rate units right next to, to the hobby store, Michael's, you can stand inside the train station and look across that parking lot, but there's a chain link fence there to prevent entrance, and it's the level, same level all the way across. So those are a couple of my issues that I'd like to discuss with you and get some feedback from you. So that's pretty much it for right now. I'm pretty much in agreement with the other things I've heard from Lisa.
So just briefly touching on your first comment with regard to study.
One other thing, Zach, one other thing, which raises my issue, I think you've already sort of touched on it, but with the fish market development, you're only getting housing, a below market housing based on the 50 units per acre, but if we, if we raise everybody to 75, that'll give us more below market rate housings, but, but less than the 100 to 130. So thank you.
So just one kind of clarification, or I guess maybe settings parameters. So when you talk about study area eight, I believe we're looking at probably, there's really three opportunity sites there that if you were interested in, if council was interested in reducing the density, you have one site, it's on Norfolk, just to the north of Waters Park. I don't have the address offhand. We've also identified housing opportunities at Parkside Plaza, which is across the street from the fish market site, which has a current development proposal. And then there's the PS Business Parks, which is to the north along Amflid and Grant. These, the, the PS Business Parks is currently designated half high one, half high two. So dropping right now, all three of these sites would have the ability to realize 50 units an acre. So if there was council direction on such, we, that would be down, and we would be reducing those designations back to that threshold. There would be a, a reduction in potential capacity, as especially the PS Business Parks does have, have capacity availability, and, and that would, right now, it sits at at least 130 units an acre. So that would be dropping it down to 50. The Norfolk site, I believe, you can go up to 99, and then Parkside Plaza similarly could go up to 99. So if there's council direction on that, those, those adjustments could be made.
Could I ask a follow-up question, Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
So Zach, are you saying that there's nothing in between, we couldn't do 75?
Right now, the land use categories that we have, that medium two encompasses the range from 51 to 99. And that's, that's the designation that, that two of the three sites are right now. That's not to say that when we move forward with the zoning, we can't set a more specific density within that range, because that's how the land use informs the zoning. Not every zoning will be at the maximum of the range. You can have zonings that fall in, in any number of places within that range.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to, I'll just tell you now, I wouldn't want to lower it to 50. So I'd like to find something in the middle if we can.
Any other questions?
I think that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Please.
Zach, could you bring up the map of Palm Avenue, please? I was just curious if you could reiterate, are we talking about removing the designation of mixed use, which is what we were talking about moving towards, or? So at the northern part of this, there is housing, as you can see, kind of cutting in. And I'm just curious, you know, it, it actually seems like it would be a good place to have housing, in my opinion, because it's, it's within the transit zone, it's a very short walk to the railroad, and also it's stepped back off of the El Camino Real, which would be, you know, better quality of air, air quality, I would think, for building housing, especially with the train being converted to electric rail in the next 10 years. It's, so I was just curious, we're, we're, we're basically, the, the proposal is to go away from mixed use back to service commercial, which is what it is now?
That would be correct, yes. And the couple of factors also that inform that is, these are a variety of generally smaller parcels, and so to get a meaningful residential project, you would need some degree of aggregation. In addition to the, the air quality, there is the noise and vibration that goes along with a, with the train, the rail corridor, but with that said, residential can definitely exist adjacent to the rail corridor.
Yeah, I mean, most of my district backs onto it, so. As far as commercial, if we do get, if we do go with only high one and not high two, if there is a high two building that wants to convert from, from a commercial building to a residential building, does that make it not feasible or not allowed?
If you, there is an existing building, that, that building has, has legal non-conforming status, and so you can use the space that already exists. And so, I mean, right now, in the, the measure Y context, we have buildings that exceed that limit, and those buildings, we've, we've seen conversions, and that building can be used, you just couldn't expand it.
I understand, thank you. And then the, we talked a little bit the other day about CSM wanting to have student housing potentially on campus, but that is not the same property as the 2929 and 2955 Campus Drive, right?
No, this is on the other side of Highway 92 off of Campus Drive, just above the Laurelwood Shopping Center.
And I, I told you I was going to ask you this, but did we find out if CSM did have, did have housing, you know, student, or resident, sorry, faculty housing built on campus, would that qualify against or for our arena numbers for the city of San Mateo, or does it count for the county of San Mateo?
So CSM campus is within San Mateo city limits, so any housing built within our city limits would be units that we could use toward. city limits would be units that we could use toward meeting our arena allocation.
I think I have one more question. I'm sorry, give me one sec. Now everything else is comments. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, through the mayor. Zach and Joanna, thank you for your presentation. And thank you for including some responses to public comment and helping us cut down some of the questions that we otherwise would have felt inclined to ask. I did want to ask a little more about the discussion related to air pollution and what we can do about it. I appreciate a new tweak on one of our policies, and I would certainly support that. If we were to take a broader look, though, if, if, I guess, you know, my first, I guess, so if if council were to ask staff to create a new version of the draft land use map with a buffer away from 92 and 101, within accordance with BACMID and CAR guidelines, or perhaps a fraction of those, shifting residential uses from the direct area near the highway to somewhere else within the study areas, you know, how might, you know, could that work out? How how might it fit within our current process, the schedule and the timeline you laid out earlier today?
So obviously, if there's council direction, that's something we could endeavor on. But it would, it would likely not align with our current schedule. Right now, at this point in the process, if we were to shift land uses and density into that degree where we're reducing certain areas and then allocating that, those units in other areas, we would likely, obviously, we'd need to reevaluate the land use map, look at what the new growth projections would be in a scenario like that, and would likely have to update the environmental impact report and reissue the draft EIR. And so in all likelihood, we would probably be delayed six months to a year. So it would, would not, we would not be able to move forward with a potential adoption in beginning of 2024, if there was direction to go that way.
I see. Thank you for that. What do you think of then potentially adding a little more policy language to complement, I would think, the one that you shared tonight? Something, you know, that might fit within the conservation open space numbers 4.6 or 4.9, or perhaps fit within land use element itself in under eight, that reads like, something like, any new development that's within 1,000 feet of 101 or 92, that has residential or open space or other sensitive receptors, should locate those as far from the highways as possible. And I guess what I'm thinking in as an example would be, you know, like actually in study eight, the, the property you mentioned by Amphit, it's currently mixed use High One and Two. But, you know, if, you know, a development like that, if it could place, you know, if it's indeed like a mix of office buildings and residential uses and perhaps some commercial, for example, that the, the office spaces would be placed closer to the highway and the residential placed in the, you know, closer to the other residential areas. Is that something that you think could be potentially added? Or do you see issues with it?
No, I think if there's council interest, adding a policy to prioritize placing open outdoor open space as far from its edge with a highway corridor on a site, that we can definitely include that. There was discussions, particularly, this is the PS Business Park site, and you can see how it kind of has a split land use designation with the higher part near the highway and the lower part adjacent to, I believe that would be Grant, where the intent would be that you put the office along the highway, and then you put the housing farther away on that that more western edge. But the same principle could apply for where you place open space. Another concept is, is that maybe for some of these sites, a priority is based on additional indoor community amenities to where maybe you have to, because the key is with the building design, that indoor air quality with mechanical ventilation and filtration, we can do a pretty good job at minimizing pollutants and particulate getting inside the building. Obviously, the outdoor open space is much harder because it's not a contained space. So how you can protect it from airborne particulate and pollution is much more challenging. So for a project that is built near a highway, maybe there's priority on additional indoor community space, where then you could still ventilate. And the city does have a very robust parks and outdoor open space system. So maybe at that point, the thought would be residents are maybe not spending their time outdoor in any prolonged period of time on those sites. But if there is outdoor open space proposed, and placing it as far away as possible, is definitely doable in terms of adding as a policy.
Thank you. I was just a little curious about the suggestion, staff's recommendation related to the parcel on Campus Drive, because I sort of remember, and I'm going to go back and see if I can see it, I thought that maybe the, the owner was asking to be classified as high office as opposed to medium office. Is that, is that your recollection?
Yes, that is correct. And so right now, the proposed land use is residential medium two, which allows a range of 51 to 99 units per acre. And so the the property owner is asking for the office designation and asking for office high, which would allow for three to five stories. And basically, I think it's 100 to 100, or maybe it's 51 to 90 or to 130 units an acre. So the office high does result in a density that does go beyond that commensurate residential density. When you look at the Peninsula Heights project, which is directly adjacent on Campus Drive, that project actually, because this is, these are larger sites and they're more hillside and sloped in nature, the the density actually comes out to around 20 units an acre. And so looking at that, and being commensurate with the existing office designation that it has, staff is recommending an office medium. This would allow for two to four stories in range and has a density range of 35 to 50 units an acre, which would appear to be equivalent to what's allowed now, would absolutely allow the existing office, which is four stories and the uses that are permitted there, nothing would change there. But if there was an evolution to residential, that level of density would would be appropriate within that context, because these are larger sites. And so that's, that's kind of the basis for staff's recommendation. We were concerned that there would be a higher density ceiling with the office high in this area.
See, okay. I appreciate that.
And then just going back to your previous point, and actually, Joanna, I, there was a, I had recalled this being in there, and Joanna pulled up, we actually have a current policy in our land use element. This is LU 3.9, which talks about office park evolution. And as part of it, it talks about within an office site that is redeveloped as mixed use, locate offices and commercial space closest to high volume highway, roadways, and locate new residential uses as far as possible from these whole high volume roadways. So that kind of, I did recall that discussion happening during our preferred, during our goals, policies and action section. And so this was, so we do have a policy that kind of gets, not completely, but along the vein that you were looking for there.
Indeed. Let's see, into mixed use districts, in an office site that's redeveloping. Aha. Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you for that. Let's see, I'll just see if I have any other. I guess I do, I, you know, I have, I have received a number of comments that try to, you know, tackle the the notion of density bonus from 10 to 12 and stories, and particularly noting that there are some design, like frankly, material constraints that may prevent that from being something that is as prevalent at that level as we might be seeing today under current measure Y heights with, and the projects that are being applying for density bonus today. As an example, I've been told that, you know, if you're building residential buildings, for example, the, like, the physical constraints of wooden and other non steel buildings can only go to about seven or eight stories. And then if you switch to steel, not only is it quite a bit more expensive to get like higher up, but then it's so much more expensive that it wouldn't pencil out to make something that's with, like, within 10 to 12 stories. And you would really need something, you know, much higher than that to be worthwhile. And so I guess like that, I wanted to use that an example as a, as a way to ask you, you know, how, how prevalent do you see the idea of invoking density bonus to go from 10 stories to 12? Is that something we've looked at? Is it, is it, is it something that we, you know, feel is, is as prevalent or legitimate as as current day understanding of density bonus as it's applied in our city?
So yeah, I think there's a number of interesting points there that that kind of build in natural limits to where height goes. And when you're looking at all residential construction, everything that we've seen and heard from developers and property owners is that these projects are going to top out around eight stories, because that's kind of the upper limit before you move into the next classification of construction, mid-rise construction, where then you have to move into more concrete and steel. Staying eight or below allows you to still use wood framing. You can kind of do a five over three where you're doing concrete and steel at the base and then moving into wood frame. Once you're at 10 stories, you're probably already into that that mid-rise construction. So in theory, at that height, it could be conceivable you go from 10 to 12 because you've already transitioned to that next level of construction. The more natural point where it's going to top out is probably around eight. This, based on where the building code is currently, and based on what we've heard from, from works from a financial perspective. And so, yeah, I mean, obviously, we can't see into the future, but where our current building codes are and will probably be for the, at least the next couple of cycles, these are the likely, these will be likely how they're applied.
Thank you for that. Just going to see if I have anything else at this moment. I think, I think those are my questions at this time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate all the diligence from my colleagues, lots of really, I think, material questions, lines of questions, and responsiveness to community feedback. So thank you for that. I, I guess I had a couple, just a couple of questions. One, I, I appreciate the, you know, the point about wanting to create for sale housing and address the need for our missing middle community members who don't qualify for affordable housing and are priced out of market rate housing. And and so the, you know, the cost of entry for the, for getting in housing options is, is significant. And we have very limited for sale housing options for first time buyers of a certain income bracket. And so I just, you know, I consider Peninsula Heights to be a really exceptional project that took underutilized commercial offline and converted into townhomes. And, you know, while we want to create a general plan that's looking, you know, forward, you know, having that feasibility analysis and understanding the lower level density opportunities for townhome creation, for me, is really important. And so I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're getting this as right as possible if we're talking about lowering densities to specifically encourage and allow for that kind of housing product, which we know is in, is in high demand and very limited supply. So I just, I wanted to understand, again, kind of the, the, you know, five unit difference and how, you know, what you're thinking is on that, like, would we be able to get a Peninsula Heights at 20 units per acre if, as opposed to 15 units per acre? So, you know, I, I just want to make sure that we're being really thoughtful about, you know, about, I think, our shared intention of wanting to create more missing middle housing and more entry level homeownership opportunities in the city.
Definitely. And this is one particular perspective we've heard from other developers. And often what we've heard is for this, this particular housing type product, the range is 15 to 24 seems to be where that sweet spot is for the densities. And so identifying the 20, obviously, if council's interested in dropping as low as 15, that's very doable. We chose 20 because the mixed use category exists in a variety of contexts around the city. And so we didn't want to necessarily lose opportunities for areas that were maybe closer to transit. But we saw 20 as still being able to facilitate townhome development or that type of housing type, depending on where it was. But that's staff's recommendation. If council's interested in dropping to 15, that's definitely doable.
So, so I hear, I guess I hear what you're saying in terms of the, we can, by providing a deeper range, that we, we give ourselves better options and can still get townhomes at 20 units per acre?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then I, I wanted to echo the, sort of the line of questioning about Palm Avenue that Councilmember Hedges raised. And while I, you know, I also, I really appreciate the consideration for retaining our light industrial and the fact that it's clustered and knowing how important it is to keep our small businesses here. I also share the kind of the, the competing concern about wanting to locate residential near transit, knowing that we have a ton of residential along the rail corridor. Rail is getting, you know, converted to electric. So it's going to be, you know, in term, from the air quality consideration, it seems more optimal, especially if we're considering reducing density along, you know, 101 and 92 in certain parcels. Are we making up housing density in other places? And so, you know, I guess the, my question is, what, you know, is there a net loss overall with these, these kind of tweaks that we're making and that we should be thinking about in terms of overall housing production? And it's, and more specifically in that, in that situation?
So one thing that is worth noting is, the footprint of service commercial in the city is already getting meaningfully smaller as a result of this land use map. There's areas along Clermont, there's areas along Palm on the other side of 92, and a number of other areas around the city where service commercial is already transitioning to mixed use or other designations. And so these businesses, these clusters, once service commercial goes away, it doesn't come again, show up somewhere else in the city. This is a type of use based on the property values that you need to make it work, the buildings, which are generally older. You're not going to see new service commercial businesses or uses or buildings pop up on sites that aren't any service commercial. And so we identify this as an opportunity to retain because there are a variety of businesses here. And so we were looking at this, not just from the housing production lens, but also from the preserving local small business lens as well, and seeing this as an opportunity to help support them. Because there, there would definitely be businesses that lost that probably would have to leave the city if they were displaced from this location. The other piece was, is these are generally smaller lots. And so it's not necessarily the most opportune, there would have to be parcel aggregation in order to get a meaningful residential development here. So while there is capacity on paper, it may be more limited. So while there is capacity on paper, it may be more limited in terms of what's actually realized. So those are all factors. This is a staff recommendation, but that's the thinking behind this recommendation.
Is there a way to meet in the middle? Because I guess I'm wondering, you know, parcel assembly is kind of standard practice, right? And so that justification alone doesn't exactly hold from my perspective, even though, you know, they are smaller lots. So I guess I'm, maybe there's a way to strike a balance where we can, you know, do both. And because it is, it seems to be a kind of large section from my perspective. And I, and I think that there's kind of a split interest, right? And so I'm, you know, I'm kind of curious, like, is there, what would, what would that look like? And is there, how would that, you know, how would those kind of tweaks on the margin affect our timeline?
They wouldn't really affect our timeline, but I mean, one thing that is worth noting is what these, once these districts transition, these uses eventually go away. Because having a residential building right next to an auto body shop just isn't a great adjacency. And inevitably, those residential uses aren't going to be happy with that. And so over time, you will see these uses. So the, once the transition starts, it won't be a harmonious environment. When you get a mixed-use environment, it'll fade out. And eventually, these uses will go away. So it's the concept that if we want to be a full-service city, we need to make a purposeful effort to identify where these zones exist and how we want to preserve them. So that's really the opportunity here. So wherever council wants to go with it, we can work with it. But we did want to highlight the characteristics here and the opportunities that may arise that won't necessarily show up in other parts of the city.
If I may just add a little bit to that through the mayor, I'm Christina Horstberger, interim assistant city manager. I just wanted to add a little bit of nuance to what Zach is explaining. And he mentioned the concept of a full-service city and that what the service commercial, when they go away, they don't come back. It is small businesses, but I also would add that they're small businesses often that support other small businesses in the city. And so a lot of times, they are the warehouses that supply the other small businesses in the city. They provide work, work for a lot of, you know, the residents of the city. And so they do, there's a network aspect to that. And they supply the services that people would then have to travel out of the city for. The auto uses are difficult to come by. And when they go away, they really don't come back. And I did work in a city where a lot of the auto service uses went away, and a lot of the residents had to travel, and they had to travel farther and farther to get their auto repair uses and auto service uses. And it became a real convenience factor. And so he's right, they don't come back. And I think it's important to think of the ripple effect when we think about that, about the warehouses and the supply chains and the things like that. There's catering services and things like that that we need to consider. And so I would just make sure that we have that complete picture when we consider the situation.
I appreciate that. And I, so I guess, you know, I think, I can't speak for everyone else, but I've heard over time, you know, my previous council and this council, both very strongly supporting preservation of our small business community. And so I guess my, you know, the other sort of interest would be, are we proposing a net loss of housing in, you know, in other areas that could be made up in other opportunity sites? And have we done any analysis on that?
Not at this point. I think once we have a final land use map, we'll evaluate the updated capacity. But I think just on the pure capacity, we need to recognize the capacity that this map is adding. And that as you develop a map, you're trading off, you're picking and choosing exactly where it's going to go. So I don't necessarily see this as a net loss. We're figuring out exactly where we want our land use map to be. And what priorities go where, what businesses and uses we want to go where. So this is part of the process that really settles in what our final land use maps looks like. And then we'll evaluate, what do those final numbers look like?
Okay. And so let's talk about timeline. I'm curious to hear from you, do you mind bringing up the timeline slide?
Is this the one at the very beginning or the one at the end?
The...
The orange slide with the graphic. We'll go there first. Is that the one?
I think when we're, so it had a January date?
Yes. Yeah. So in terms of timeline, a lot of manual clicking, yes, we are looking at January of '24 to publish our final general plan along with our final environmental impact report. And then that would lead to public hearings for adoption in February and March.
Okay. And so if we, I guess, from what I've gathered, I think we want, we want the general plan, the approved general plan to align with whatever we put on the ballot. And then whatever, whatever is passed on the ballot, then we, that, the zoning code flows out of that. Is that, did I get that correct? Is that the sort of overarching timeline in process?
Well, the land use map that's adopted would be the feed into the updated version to Measure Y that would go before the voters in '24. And this updated land use map will also inform how we update our zoning code.
Okay. So I guess I'm curious in terms of the next steps on, it seems to me a little bit, I'm a little bit concerned about the timeline because it seems a little bit premature to publish the plan until we've done the ballot testing and the ballot polling. So I'm not really sure where that process fits into this timeline. My understanding, you know, I also share W. Mayor's interest in like, you know, looking at how heights can, increased heights and densities can extract maximum community benefit. You know, that there's lines of questioning and framing that we haven't taken to a third-party expert. And, you know, given the incredible community needs, including things like dredging and funding dredging projects on the east side and major infrastructure projects, I've been, you know, I was looking back on my time serving, there at one point was a real interest in having an aquatic center in the city of San Mateo. There are many really important community amenities that have no source of funding. And we can look at development as a, you know, a way to open those doors. And so, so I'm just, I'm struggling here with understanding the timeline of how we're going to craft the most informed ballot approach and then this publication date. And then another wild card that I'm concerned and, you know, have questions about is how that connects to the hopeful certification of our housing element. You know, I have very real concerns about capping height in this process without doing even more poll testing, given that so much of our housing element is pointing to the ballot, the ballot measure and contingent on the ballot measure passing. And so, you know, we don't have a certified housing element at this point. And I guess one of my questions would be like, what, what stage of the housing, where are we at with the housing element?
So we, with regard to the housing element, we're continuing to work with HCD and looking to hopefully publish an updated draft that addresses a number of their comments in the coming weeks so we can resubmit back to them. So yeah, that's where we are with the housing element.
So a number of weeks. And then what's the period of, for their review?
They do have up to 60 days each time we submit.
And just as a reminder to council and public, our eligibility for funding important projects and getting, remaining eligible for receiving grants, that's contingent on having a certified housing element?
We'd have to look at the specific funding, but yes, there's definitely potential exposure there.
And that exposure triggers basically January, is that right?
I would need to look specifically at what funding sources were in play.
I remember in a previous conversation, I believe we were, Christina, are you remembering this?
It depends on which particular, on which funding source, on which stream. But yes, there were different timelines depending on which ones they were. But you gave us a list and we looked them up and there were different dates. But yeah, I would think that January would be a trigger for at least one of them that's a year past certification date.
Yeah. So January will be a year past certification date. We're talking about potentially losing eligibility for essential funding to finance affordable housing. And we don't have a certified housing element. And we don't, at this point, look like we'll even be able to have a certified housing element 60 days after we submit. So we'll be within a window where we're completely unable to attain critical and essential financing opportunities for affordable housing for at least a short period of time because of the delays in the housing element process. So that, I mean, I raised, I raised this and I appreciate the update and knowing, because I think that this is part of sort of the, you know, the question about the timeline and the process. So I'm, you know, I'm curious to hear about where does ballot testing fit into this?
So the hope was this evening is to kind of understand where the council's at with overall direction. What I'd like to do is actually look to have a ballot measure consultant retained hopefully by the end of November at the latest, as we'd have to start preparing based off of the feedback that we're receiving from council, ballot language that we'd want to test probably at the end of January, early February at the latest, understanding that we are coming up to the March primary season and talking with the, you know, potential ballot measure consultants. They see that as just a potential window where you'd want to stay out far ahead from the primary season when you were polling to get a better, accurate read.
So we're talking about basically retaining a ballot consultant immediately, right? In November? And then they would be running polls in hopefully January, February?
It would be late January, February timeframe.
Okay. And then we would have, that would presumably come back to council for consideration in...
It'd probably be, it'd kind of align with the charter amendment, because we're also going to have to, just as you mentioned earlier, we're going to have to poll also the charter amendments and how it works with potential ballot language for the heights measure as well. But I believe possibly April, if I recall.
And we have to decide if we're putting something on the ballot, it's August, right?
Well, we'll want to go in June to give us a little bit of leeway in time. And typically, you have till, I believe it's August 8th, we have to check with the actual county just to see what the date, the exact cutoff date is. But I also like to, when I typically have to run ballot measures, you want to give yourself a little bit of wiggle room too, in case you have to come back to the council one more time.
Okay. So why are we, why are we proposing to publish the general, you know, adopted general plan? Or no, I'm sorry, why are we, would it be possible to, to do polling and integrate the lessons and learnings from polling and still maintain our timeline?
So I can just speak to just, I can't speak to Zach and your team will have to talk about just what that means for your overall land use map and the general plan in general. If you were going to like tier off, say you'd have a question, say we were questioning H1, and then you have like a H2 question, ballot, ballot measure question that you'd have to check out, I don't know how that would dovetail in with the work that we're doing. Because we'd be running almost like, you'd have to be doing two different plans at the same time if you were going to develop that.
One other piece, and I think in addition to just where we've had a five-year general plan process, and we are looking to be able to wrap this up so we can move forward on the many other initiatives that we have, we also need a certified SEQA document in order to move forward with the ballot initiative. And the general plan's EIR would serve that purpose. And so that's a key piece, especially with something like a Measure Y amendment, which there is definite real growth implications there. We need a certified SEQA document that looks at the environmental impacts of that potential ballot initiative.
And sorry, remind me, what is the requirement for getting a certified SEQA document? And how does that, how does that relate to the timeline?
Well, we would do that concurrently with when we adopt the general plan.
Okay. So if we adopt the, so if we're doing it concurrently, how is that impactful?
We would, when you have, hold adoption hearings for the general plan, the first step you would do is review and certify the SEQA document. In this case, it would be an environmental impact report, and it will likely have a statement of overriding considerations because of some of the impacts identified. So there would be a process to do that. And then you would move forward and then take action on adoption of the general plan.
Right. But the EIR already encompasses the maximum already. So that's already been established. So I am not seeing, I guess I'm not seeing how that's germane.
What's the question on there? I guess I don't know.
I guess I'm not clear about how that's materially related to the question that I'm asking, which is, you know, which is interest in doing polling, ballot polling, ballot testing, A/B testing through, you know, through this expedited timeline with a, you know, third-party consultant to better inform the decisions that we're making.
So I can speak to just overall staff's approach. My understanding of how staff was approached and all of this is that, based off of the council direction, I believe it was in April, the last meeting, as you referred to, just overall giving staff direction.
April 3rd, yes.
Okay, wonderful. The thought was in building out the overall timeline of how we are moving forward was that tonight, as part of this discussion, getting council direction as to whether, you know, H1, H2, what direction are we looking to move forward with? And then based off of that, we would be meeting with the ballot measure consultant and then go ahead and start testing what would be appropriate ballot language, and then bring that back to the city council for further discussion. That's kind of what staff's approach, my understanding, is of how this all was kind of set up to take place with overall timeline and kind of the phasing of the initiative itself.
Well, I guess I'm still left with some questions and some, I think that there were some missed opportunities in terms of the way that we crafted the, you know, the ballot, not looking at, you know, things that have been in place in the city for 30-plus years now, like community benefits and how that factors into increased heights and densities. And so for me, there's a lot of unanswered questions still. Okay, those are my questions. I think we're ready to open up for a public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have eight speaker slips in-house and we have some, five hands raised in the remote environment. Now seven, please raise your hands if you intend to comment on this item so we can get So we have 10 in-house and it looks like seven online.
Okay. Madam Clerk, we had a request for taking a quick break.
Okay. So we're going to take a quick break and then come back to public comment.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. We welcome speakers to provide public comment, but please be advised this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic. If speaking to a particular agenda item, speakers must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned, and if they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. Madam Clerk, are we ready to start?
Yes, we are. So our in-house public speakers, some people have left, so they are racing home to get on Zoom instead. So we'll let their hands still raise on Zoom. So our first speaker here in the council chambers is Ken Abreu, followed by John Tarleton, and then I think Lisa Tanner has left. I don't see her online yet.
How much time do we have? What was our speaker count total?
We're somewhere between 15, around 15.
Two minutes, okay, for everyone? That's in our guideline, right? Okay, let's do two. Is your mic on?
Is my mic on? It is, okay. It is on now, okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Ken Abreu, 40-year resident of San Mateo, and I'm also representing the Sierra Club today in the letter we sent back in September. I think the key point I'd like to make today that's in that letter is you need to keep H2. You need to keep H2 to meet the key goals that are needed to be met by this general plan. The first is affordable housing. I think the survey pointed out that everybody feels that is the top thing on their mind, that we need to get done in this city. Whether, you know, we're not going to get there unless we make significant progress. H2 is going to allow you to do that much better than H1. The second thing that was on the list, the priorities, number two, and for ours at the Sierra Club as well, was providing more parks, open space, and greening up the city. You need height to be able to do that. That allows you to take that density and put it in heights so that you can get space for parks, for open space, and the like. So that's really critical to keep H2. The second thing that's really critical is to get it on the ballot and passed. Now, I think what you need to do there is you need to tell more of the story. You're going to need to explain how going from, you know, 100 down to 130 units per acre from 200 dramatically reduces the density, therefore dramatically reduces, you know, by 1,000 units what we have to work with, and also makes it much less financially feasible to do affordable housing, which is already almost impossible to do. The other thing, if you can go from the eight to the 10 and maybe even to the 12 stories, it significantly increases your opportunity to get the parks and open space. And I think you need a better picture for that. And I would say use the, reimagine Hillsdale examples, where they show going up to 12 allowed them to give much more open space, open up the creek, and have lower heights near the residential area. You need a better picture. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is John Tarleton.
Mayor Lee and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm John Tarleton, president and CEO of Tarleton Properties. We are the property owners of 2929 and 2955 Campus Drive that have been referenced tonight. For the sake of efficiency, my comments will need to rely heavily on the letter from our office dated yesterday. We are concerned about the proposed land use change for the 2040 general plan. R&amp;D uses are valuable community partners to the city. I welcome the opportunity to speak with those of you who are interested about our Mellow Park campus, where our R&amp;D uses have been three of the top 25 sales tax revenue generators for the city for the last 25 years, while churning out life-saving technologies and generating jobs across broad socioeconomic spectrum. We respectfully request that there be continued consideration of office high designation. In the event that office high is deemed unfeasible, we request that the draft language clarify that research facilities will be allowed in the same way as office high and as currently allowed. I want to thank staff and consultants for all the hard work that's gone into the plan thus far and the work that's yet to come. And thank you and council and staff for your service to the community.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Lisa Tanner, who I don't see in the audience. So we will move along to Lori Watanuki.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of the city council. My name is Lori Watanuki. The current general plan is valid until 2030, so why the rush since it meets the RENA numbers and also has a buffer? The density bonus is a very confusing topic. The new housing laws are changing rapidly, and there's a new law called AB 1287, which will bring proposed heights, for example, at eight or 10 stories, to 16 or 20 stories. The heights could double 100%. So if you take a look at that land use map today, the majority of it is dark navy blue and medium navy blue on Third, Fourth, Fifth Baldwin, and it's all mixed use. And this could translate to 16 to 20 stories. The whole downtown could be all tall buildings, especially across from Central Park. There is a concern with High Density 1 and High Density 2, and it is too extreme. We do not approve the maximum growth alternative C. Also, the expansion of light manufacturing and combining it with service commercial is a problem for South Ample. It affects Central and Sunny Bay neighborhoods. Currently warehouses draw larger truck traffic, and car repair businesses present overflow parking issues. And we feel that these businesses bring diesel pollution, truck noise, and damages to our trees. We have no protections. Therefore, I mean, you could possibly plant Italian cypress trees along the 101 sound wall there. You can raise the sound wall. But you can also have adaptive reuse of these buildings and have small offices that are not able to afford Class A, Akito Studios, and martial arts, and artist studios. So those are some other alternatives, which would be great for the community.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve McKibben. I don't believe he's in the audience any longer. Michelle McCarran.
Thank you, mayor and council members. And I will let you know I'm a little sleep deprived. I have a sick child at home, but I thought it was important that I attended this evening. It's my first meeting that I've ever been to. I have to say I'm extremely worried about what's happening in San Mateo. I will say a lot of the people that are my age, that have kids in school, have no idea that this is even happening. And so I'm speaking on their behalf because they're focused on their families and their children and not thinking about the city at this moment. And to me, the city is very important. We have so many, we have such a strong history, and I feel that, you know, preserving that history is very important as well. And I'm worried that with all this new growth that's happening, that history is not going to be preserved. And a lot of the older buildings that we have will be torn down to make way for new buildings, new growth, new construction. The other thing that I'm curious about is, you know, you mentioned in your presentation that statewide demographic projections are different from Bay Area and Peninsula housing needs and growth patterns. So how and according to who? Who's doing these studies? How do we know what the growth patterns are? How do we know that they're accurate? Because we're putting all of this money and resources into this new construction in the city, which is, one, going to increase traffic, increase pollution, decrease quality of life for those of us that live here and that pay property taxes to live here. And we've moved here because of the beautiful neighborhoods that we have. And that's a big draw. That was for me. And the fact that my neighbor can tear down their house and now put, you know, multiple units on scares me a lot. So that's a big worry as well. And, you know, I know the gentleman from the Sierra Club was talking about H2. That was really surprising to me. I think, gosh, in the least, like, H1 would be the best outcome because I don't want to see our downtown be huge high rises. That would make me really sad. It's such a beautiful downtown right now. So I'm hoping that you guys will take that into consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our last in-person speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, council members. After five years of exhaustive outreach and statistically valid community polling, we know two things. First, the lack of affordable housing is top of mind for most of our residents. And second, a strong majority of San Mateans, 59% likely voters, support allowing up to 10 stories of new housing in the H2 range. Those bearing the greatest burdens of our housing crisis and those directly affected, people under 40, as well as renters, are the strongest supporters. I would note that likely voters are wealthier, whiter, and more likely to be homeowners than the average resident, and that citywide support for 10 stories is 8.95% greater than the final Measure Y tally. Allowing a H2 range of at least 10 stories is critical for our shared community goals around climate, around affordability, and inclusivity, and the bulk of San Mateo voters agree. The concerns around density bonus usage at 10 stories I believe to be unfounded. The reason people are utilizing SDBL right now is because our heights and densities are impossibly low. Meaningfully increasing those limits to H2 will facilitate development without the need for SDBL and will allow us to get low-income units instead of just very low and reach different levels of affordability. Finally, of critical importance is that, based on conversations that advocates, including myself, have had with HCD, as well as their numerous letters to us, we cannot achieve housing element certification by the state if we pursue the H1 option. I would remind the council as well as the audience that SB 423, allowing ministerial byright approval of projects in cities without a compliant housing element, goes live in January at the 10% affordability level and can be combined with the builder's remedy. Failure to embrace H2 will result in significant loss of local control. I'm personally fine with that, but many others will not be. Those are the choices in front of us. I urge the council to embrace higher heights and densities and move ahead with H2 at 10 stories. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now move to our remote public comment. If you intend to comment on the general plan item, if you could please raise your hand now. We have 12 speakers online. Our last speaker will be Sean. First speaker is Kevin Choi. Please go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lee and city council members and city staff. Appreciate the opportunity to talk with you all tonight. I'm here representing Harvest Properties, local developer, actively involved in several different projects in your city. We're really excited on all the developments that we're working on with you guys. And we submitted a comment to you all as it related to the housing overlay for the mixed-use medium and the commercial medium designations, and appreciate city staff making the modifications to the office zoning. We support that recommendation. We would recommend that city council do take a look at the minimum threshold of 20 dwelling units to the acre that city staff has recommended. The reason I bring this up is, as the city staff has mentioned, typical townhome developments is in that 15 to 24 dwelling units an acre. And while 20 does put that in the middle, there are, you know, depending on the site that you're looking at, Peninsula Heights is a great example. There are capabilities and inabilities for certain land to be developable, yet that is still part of the dwelling units per acre calculation. So we would recommend that city council take a look at lowering that minimum threshold to 15 dwelling units an acre to ensure that there's the maximum flexibility for for-sale housing production in the city of San Mateo. Appreciate the time and enjoy the rest of your evenings.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Naomi. I didn't realize it was my time. So there's been a lot of surveys and meetings that indicate that the majority of San Mateo residents want to limit growth and preserve open space, and that we also want low crime and a small-town atmosphere. I urge the city council to update the general plan's land use map and density map to reflect a moderate growth scenario, not maximum growth scenario, and ensure that every new development also adds green space or public recreation facilities to our town. I'm a working parent as well, really busy. I've barely been able to attend meetings. But in September, I attended the Planning Commission meeting, and it was shocking to me and clear that the Planning Commission is proposing maximum growth. Unless you're a developer, unless you're getting money from developers, there's no reason to make our downtown 10 stories and ask for maximum growth. For example, on page 34 of Study Area 4 for downtown San Mateo, it says they want to allow development at high intensities and densities in downtown San Mateo. That means that across from our beautiful park, it's going to be 10 stories. Along B Street, 8 stories. We're going to lose the cultural vibrancy charm and history of downtown San Mateo. We're going to be walking in the shadows of massive 8- to 10-story buildings. Instead of sunlight, we won't be able to sit at outdoor cafes under sunlight. It'll be akin to San Francisco. This is not, we are a suburban town, and we need to maintain our suburban town. In terms of where we have affordable housing, I propose that we put that in areas that already have density. We maintain downtown as walkable, vibrant, safe. We don't support H2, and we keep low heights near single-home residential areas.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Mike Weinauer, Central Neighborhood, and the spokesperson for SMURG, the committee behind Measure Y. I've submitted our comments, my comments, in writing. But, you know, in essence, it's, and most of you know this, we feel it's way too big. It's way too rushed, and it doesn't represent what, for example, the prior speaker, who represents really a silent majority of San Mateans who are largely ignorant of this entire process and are only now starting to wake up to what's becoming of their city, the, nothing short of the complete urbanization of it and the elimination of our historic assets and our single-family neighborhoods. This plan is, does not represent a compromise. Compromise is something that we at SMURG have always been willing to do. We've never been no-growth. We want smart growth, moderate growth. And honestly, all sides should come away kind of unhappy from the process as a result of that. And right now, I guarantee you, there's a lot of developers rubbing their hands together pretty gleefully over what's being handed to them. Developers will be enriched, while San Mateans' quality of life will definitely, and then the EIR approves that, will objectively, quantitatively suffer. And you're gambling with millions of dollars and hours of time and all the issues with the state. So, you know, all the fear-mongering in the world is not going to trick the electorate. We will be there to educate them. And as far as your survey, you have the most statistically significant survey you could ever ask for in the 2020 election. And that survey put a figurative gun to people's head that said, hey, either take tall buildings or we're going to come get your neighborhoods. And Mayor Lee sort of, you know, enforced that view. And we have to reject that fear-mongering and join the 19 of 21 San Mateo County cities who haven't, who the HCD is playing games with and push back against these ridiculous unfunded mandates. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Hello, this is Ryan Modersheimy, speaking on behalf of my, myself and myself only. I'm calling in support of the 12-story option or the 10-story option for the height limits being discussed today. Council has been presented with two statistically significant pieces of information or polls, one which showed that a comfortable, super, two-thirds, supermajority of residents prefer significantly higher height limits than currently exist in the city of San Mateo. And another more recent statistically significant survey of likely voters indicated very comfortable majority in support of a 10-plus story option in study areas. So I would, I would just say, use the statistically significant information in front of you and work to create a San Mateo that is healthier for all, including letting more people live here who need it. My comments are informed by my experiences having friends in the city of San Mateo who have slept on couches in their homes because there are not enough rooms to accommodate their overcrowded household. That's happening in San Mateo right now. That's something we have to change. And, and I think it would be a shame if we did not seek to do that through this process and think about the most vulnerable in our communities. Additionally, I would just like to say, please, as council is making your decision, do not try to rationalize predetermined opinions. Use rationality to come to a informed opinion. And do not let the scars of past battles prevent you from doing something helpful for the city in the future and blind you from understanding the reality of today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Dear mayor, vice mayor, council members, staff, neighbors, members of the public, I'm Jenny Michelle, longtime Renton resident from Mellow Park, recovering and mother of deaf and hard-of-hearing fourth grader. Professionally, I'm a commercial property manager. Our team currently manages about half a million square feet of Class A office in the city of San Mateo. My personal comments, straight up, the current general plan does not meet our current needs. Right this minute, we have a shortage of security officers, HVAC techs, electricians, day porters, micro cleaners, fire spring techs, people in logistics, fire responders, emergency prep coordinators, trainers. The list can go on. As a rep of local landlord, I, can I meet my daily obligations in terms of labor? No, I'm required to outsource. Looking for a term time less than four hours? Good luck. We need housing for our workforce earning under the median for San Mateo County at 147,000 per capita. If you're going to bring in white-collar jobs, you must assume at least a four-to-one ratio of service to vocational, or service and vocational jobs to that white-collar job. Are you currently housing that, that labor force? Where, right? We're looking to discard our dino-burning vehicle. In Mellow, we're attempting to work in good faith and help provide denser work housing distributed throughout the municipality, moving away from that old dynamic with the vehicle. Join us. Milbury is counting us to add density. Let's support them. Tell your children that we can live here when we get older, right? I want to retire here. Join me and build for density. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Hi, Mayor and council members. Dave Cohen again, representing Ethics San Mateo. We're concerned about the general plan because the plan was produced using a population forecast that's been revised by the authoritative state agency, the California Department of Finance. The revised forecast actually shows a decline in population. And yes, we need to have more affordable housing. However, our population is going to go down. You have a copy of the forecast. It's publicly available. We also believe that the development of the plan has been subject to undue influences by the publicly announced demands contained in the agendas of activist groups. We've observed members of activist groups, including probable lobbyists, attempting to marginalize and minimize the voices of San Mateo residents who oppose parts of their agendas. We received a copy of an email written by YIMBY Action intended for city commissioners and elected officials inviting them to participate in their organization's local government alliance. The stated goal is to implant activists into city leadership. They've exceeded, succeeded in doing so. We believe our planning commission is an example. You have a copy of that email. The influence of activists on the plan must be considered. Their loud demands are drowning out what residents are stating. We therefore, and not only that, they said, please use your personal email addresses, not your city email addresses. They're trying to hide it. We therefore ask you to please reevaluate the plan using updated population forecasts and, secondly, determine the effect of conflicts of interest by the activists or those aligned with activist groups' agendas within our city government on this plan development. We believe that this city has, if it had adequate, clearly defined, and enforceable standards of conduct, these kinds of issues would not rise to this level. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Mayor Lee and members of the council, I am Robert Whitehair, speaking tonight on behalf of the 150-member San Mateo Climate Action Team. Thank you for this opportunity. I have been fortunate enough to have been involved with this process since the beginning almost, or more than four years ago. Looking at the Zoom screen at five council members and staff, I see courageous people. It's not easy to be strong and maintain a mature attitude when what you're facing tonight in a way of inappropriate public comment. But you have done so with grace while continuing to be strong. Thank you for that. The city has already shown statewide climate leadership by its adoption of REACH codes and developing a building decarbonization strategy. The best, the best next step in lieu of adopting a focused climate action element of the general plan would be to adopt a bold policy statement in support of enough staff and resources to ensure that the existing climate policies are quickly developed, adopted, and enacted. Most importantly, regarding what is before the council tonight, we support the request by others to add service commercial wherever possible and whenever possible, including, as one example, to re-designate the mixed-use to medium-use at 101 and 92 to service commercial. It would be beneficial to all to find other areas to re-designate, especially if it moves housing away from the 500 to 1,000-foot buffer. Both housing and service commercial, that's a lot to ask, but doable. We support what Ken Abreu said on behalf of the Sierra Club, H2 residential, that's the best chance of reaching housing goals. And we have to add that we desperately need a robust recreation center, similar to what Milbury and San Bruno are building and what Pearl and Game has just completed. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Cameron Gilbert, and I'm just speaking on behalf of myself and on behalf of my son, who's going to be born here in San Mateo earlier next year. First, I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for putting on an amazing series of information sessions. I attended Councilmember Hedges' session in Shoreview a couple weeks ago and found it really informative. And I really appreciate the, the amount of outreach that's gone into this. And so I would just like to really associate myself with the comments of Ken, who I think put it better than I possibly could have in full support for, for keeping H2 and just taking every opportunity possible to maximize opportunities for density in places where it makes sense, like downtown. Because if we, if I want my son to be able to grow up in a city that has green space, that has bike lanes, that has, that's safe and clean, then we need to have that tax base, and we need to be, to be able to locate all that housing in places where it makes sense so that we can house all the people who need to work here, who, like many of my coworkers and many of my wife's coworkers, currently commute 45 minutes to an hour every, or even further, every morning to get to their, to get to their jobs. The only way that all of those goals can be met is if we take advantage of these opportunities to have the density where it makes sense to make sure that everybody can, can have an affordable place to live. And to an earlier comment, talking about the decline in population that's estimated, I'd just like to say decline is a choice. We don't have to lose population over time. We don't have to see our city slowly decline and stay stagnant. If we choose to take the bold action that's necessary, we can see our city continue to grow in a way that's wonderful and beautiful and make sure that my son will grow up in a city that's even better than the one that I'm very happy to be a current homeowner in. And And to all the comments about tall buildings in downtown, don't threaten me with a good time. Thanks. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening, council. I appreciate this opportunity and I do appreciate the effort of staff on this very complex general plan. Unfortunately, it is next incomprehensible for the general public. And, you know, we're all for affordable housing. Unfortunately, these apartments, studio apartments are not doing anything to increase affordable housing in the city. I'd like to talk about the density bonus because that has been one of my ongoing comments about the confusion in the general plan. If you're telling the public that you're going to build up to eight stories, then they expect eight stories. But the current density bonus allows 50% and it allows two additional stories. A couple of people have spoken, Lori, Wantnuki and others have spoken tonight about AB 1287, which admittedly was recently passed, but I'm kind of shocked that staff cannot speak to this because I was able to find on the internet and read Cox Castle, their noted land use attorneys, read their analysis that very clearly says the density bonus will double the stories. And so I think the entire land use section, the housing element, need to be revisited to consider what the effect of this density bonus will do. Because if you approve eight or 10 stories, it can be 16 or 20 stories. And I think we need to understand the impacts of that before this general plan is approv- is approved or goes forward. And I also think the timeline is off because there are significant flaws in the EIR for the general plan in addition to the new information about this new law. So I hope the city will explain how AB 1287 will affect our general plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening, council. And first off, I just want to thank city staff for really handling this meeting really well on the previous item. I'm really saddened to see my hometown and other cities getting trolled by AI bots and et cetera. For the general plan, it is crucial for every city to take into account current state law and the future projected path of state law, especially related to housing policy. This is why I recommend H2. The irony in H1 is that the goal is to limit the perceived negative impacts of density. But a developer can just use state law in particular areas of a city to override H1. When they use state law, it never results in the best project that achieves the goals that the council iterated today of retaining small businesses, keeping open space, funding local public works projects on flood mitigation and weather mitigation, and increasing equity in the city. Cities lose out on the ability to negotiate through development agreements and other formats when the opportunity cost of them is too high. A developer will choose to use state law or builder's remedy SB 35, SB 330 and other laws over what is currently provided if the zoning isn't in that catch 22 area essentially. So by having H2, you actually bring the developer to the table because the opportunity cost decreases and they want to negotiate because going around you costs them lawyer fees, costs them time, costs them other things that they have to negotiate with state legislators and the state bureaucracy. So really, this is about trying to incentivize the developer to come to the table. With regards to how to do that, it really comes not from the general plan, but really from the specific plans that follow and from the city ordinances that you pass, whether it's amending an inclusionary housing law to incentivize missing middle housing or providing an anti-displacement plan for commercial projects where it's a one-story retail, retail building that's now turning into a mixed-use building and you want to keep your mom and pop shop there. So I urge the council to, to really go with H2. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Oh, okay. Hi, my name is Sean Augustin. I live in Sunny Bray. Thank you, council, for your time tonight. I'm a resident. As I said, I live in Sunny Bray. This is my first ever council meeting. I have a three-year-old and a six-year-old and so usually council meetings coincide with kiddo bedtime. I just wanted to quickly voice my support for High Two. I want an affordable, livable, vibrant and dense hometown. When I think of the world today, I think of California and especially the Bay Area as a haven for refugees from wars in Afghanistan and Ukraine, for refugees from states in the US with limits on reproductive freedom. I want San Mateo to be an affordable and available place for these folks, just as I and my wife moved and found and made a wonderful home here and started a family. I also want a city where my neighbors are teachers, nurses, first responders, municipal workers. I consider these folks the glue of society and they deserve a cost of housing and affordable and, and density that enables them to live near where they work. That's good for them. It's good for the environment. It's definitely good for all of us. So with that, I just want to voice again, please support High Two. Density, density is not a bad thing. Density is a very good thing. And I thank you for your time and hard work on all this. Good night.
Thank you. Next speaker, please go ahead.
Good evening, San Mateo City Council, staff. Thank you for your time tonight. Jeremy Levine here with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. HLC has been watching the general plan update process largely in relation to the housing element because we believe that this process is crucial for the city to actually get a certified housing element. Most importantly, the city needs to create a really good plan to rezone for new homes and make it easier to build affordable housing in San Mateo. HLC supports creating the maximum flexibility for housing affordability, for open space, for community amenities. The things this council wants, the things that the community is saying they want, come by allowing H2, more flexibility. San Mateo has now done two surveys. The True North Survey found that 63% of all residents supported 12 stories if it meant density remained concentrated in pre-existing areas, what the council is already looking at. A second survey commissioned by this council found that 59% of San Mateo residents had a final preference for up to 10 stories in locations near transit, stores and restaurants. The city paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for these surveys. Staff and consultants worked hard to gather this information. And HLC thinks the demographically representative surveys commissioned by this council seem like a more reliable source of information than a few dozen outraged comments. HLC looks forward to supporting a new general plan that makes building affordable housing in San Mateo easier. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please go ahead and we have one more after that.
Good evening, city council. My name is Lisa Vandevord. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. I wanted to make sure I was on. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to comment. I had to exit the, the chamber so I thought I'd pop on, up on Zoom. I'm here tonight urging you to reject the land use element as presented tonight and basically go back to the drawing board. The premise of the land use element is faulty. It does not take into consideration San Mateo County's projected declining growth between now and the year 2060. It does not take into, into consideration the variety of state density bonus law, laws, which allow for 50 to 100% increased heights above what's on the land use map. Contrary to what Mr. Doll said earlier, AB 1287 has a huge impact and I'm surprised he would say otherwise. Under AB 1287, a 10-story building can easily be 15 stories, possibly more. Moving on, the land use element does not take into consideration Measure Y. It does not consider what the majority of, of residents want, which is both affordable housing and measured growth. You can get both by choosing the lowest-growth alternative, general plan land use alternative A, and that is what I urge you to do. Looking at the general plan land use map, I would support residential and mixed-use heights of four to six stories exclusive of density bonus, which in essence is High One, including density bonus. That is already more than enough to satisfy RIN numbers, allows developers to profit and everyone to get affordable housing with measured, measured growth while preserving the suburban character and quality of life here in San Mateo. Sounds like a win-win to me. The future of San Mateo is at stake. Please, I urge you to take the time to do it right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Olga. The two people have just raised their hands. We had already announced the last speaker, so Olga will be our last speaker. Please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I would like to say that I fully support Measure Y in its current state. I don't support this aggressive growth. I don't think it will ruin San Mateo and then it will be very difficult to go, to go back. I also agree with the previous speaker who said that majority of San Matans are not aware of what's going on here. It will damage them going forward and they don't even know about it. We need to improve our sewer. We need to improve our roads, hospitals and schools. We don't need tall buildings. So, thank you. And I would like to pass the mic to another speaker at the moment.
I, I just wanted to add, with all the discussion around housing that's been going on this evening, a recurring theme was essentially workforce housing. There was the woman who was representing business interests who said that her, there was a four-to-one ratio between employment and the need for services behind those and the low-paying jobs that needed subsidized housing to remain with the city. There were other speakers who were talking essentially about pro, pro-growth, but their focus again was the opportunity for people who work in the city to live in the city. However, I do not believe that there is anything in the current plan or anything in the city guidelines at all that mandates that any of this housing be dedicated to, to the local workforce. I'd like you to look into that. Maybe the city attorney can comment on that. I think I've heard comments in the past that said something could be done to mandate that this actually, this housing remain within the city and not just escape to God knows where. But I do not believe the city currently has anything that mandates it. So when people talk about the need for workforce housing, there's a real disconnect between that and what is being done in this plan.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. And that was our final speaker.
Okay, thank you so much for everyone who stayed with us for this meeting and, and provided such meaningful public comment. This is the time for council deliberations. Is there a slide for us to go through decision points? Okay, thank you so much. So there, I think, you know, there's a, this is a very meaty agenda item with a lot of things to cover. And I guess I, I'm curious if we, do we want to talk about some of the specific revisions first in terms of some of the staff proposed changes and just kind of go, go through those things so that we can get alignment on hopefully the low-hanging fruit? Okay, great. Let's do that. So, Josh, oops, Josh, Zach. Who's Josh? Zach, maybe, do you have a summary page or that we could go through in terms of the staff recommendations?
So there's, there's three appendices within the agenda report. One contains the recommended revisions for the land use element, another for the land use map, and then a third kind of a group's introduction glossary and then a couple other kind of piece, various ones related to circulation or culture and entertainment. So you could look at them in that bundle and yeah, we do have those individual ones here, but I might recommend going by, by those three groupings if you wanted to. And then there was, there was a couple of additional pieces that had been discussed, whether it was with regard to air quality or then there was two specific property owner recommend, or members of the public who made requests on the land use map. One other thing, just before the discussion starts, I did want to provide some clarification on the topic of AB 1287. I was looking at that further and I, I did misspeak earlier with the parameters. It does, and this is something we'll have to get more up to speed on as it was just signed into law. It does allow for a double density bonus. The key is it's a density bonus. This doesn't mean a doubling of height, but it does mean that when you provide a certain number of affordable units, you get a certain density bonus. Then if you provide additional on top, that does entitle you to a second density bonus that, so if you get up to 50%, it could in theory get you up to 100%. But we do want to clarify, it's not doubling height, it's doubling density.
And to clarify further, the way the density bonus law works is as Zach indicated, it's very formulaic. The more affordable units that are provided, then the more density a developer is able to, to use. And then with affordable units, then incentives and concessions can be utilized by the developer and it's through incentives and concessions or waiver development standards that a developer can go beyond existing height requirements. So the two things kind of work in combination. But AB 1287 does provide for a significant increase in density bonus possibilities. I mean, it's complex. There, there are certain parameters. There are certain factors that one has to meet in order to achieve additional density bonus. But it is possible and the law, it was just signed into law earlier this month and around October 11th, I want to say. But it is a significant change to the density bonus law.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, so I think, I appreciate the suggestion from Zach, not Josh, about, about going through the, sort of the buckets of, of staff recommended changes. Which one do we want to tackle first?
Could I ask a question, please, before?
Oh, yes. Councilmember Hedges has a question.
Right. On, on the density bonus we were just talking about, I think it's really important that we get the details as soon as possible because we're going to have to answer those questions. But I'm really curious if you know now, how many affordable units gets what amount of increased height and density?
If I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, so it's, it's complicated. It's based on a formula. So first, under existing law, if you think of it as, like, and I'll be brief, a few different buckets, very low income, low income, moderate housing. I'll just, there's other categories. I'll leave it to those. Depending on the percentage of units you provide in any one category, that gets you a certain percentage of a density bonus. So what this bill would do is if you then look at those same categories, it's a different chart, it's a different section of the density bonus law, then depending on the percentage of affordable units, which could be in a different category, you know, that could get you an additional percentage over and above what you can get under existing law. So I mean, in terms of what actual percentages for which category results in additional density, yes. I mean, we know that now, but it's, it's very complicated and I don't want to repeat all of it now. But it could result in potentially a doubling of the density bonus depending on the mix of categories and percentages. For example, looking at the bill, if you, I think if you provide 15% low income, that gets you 50% density bonus. And I believe if you provide another 15% moderate, that gives you another 50% density bonus. I'd have to double check that, but there are, it's a significant change to the density bonus law. It won't always pan out for every project, but it is state law and we would need to implement it depending on the project that was presented to the city.
So it sounds like what you're saying is that it could be up to two additional stories and additional density. So if two stories is the state law now, then 100% would be four stories, correct?
Well, no, not necessarily. I mean, so density doesn't automatically translate into a specific number of additional stories. It really depends on the project. So there, there's no kind of formula in the state law that says you get a specific X number of additional stories in addition to an additional density bonus because you can have density in a project with very small units and that may only result in maybe one or two additional stories. But if you have larger units, that could result in more stories. It, it really depends on, it's a very project-specific analysis. I don't want to create any confusion, but it's, suffice it. but suffice it to say it's a change to the density bonus law that provides additional density over and above what exists today.
Okay, I'm looking forward to getting something in writing about that. Thank you.
Okay. So are we ready to turn our attention to staff recommendations? Okay, so we have a suggestion to start with Attachment 4. Do you mind bringing that up? Great. Okay. I don't think we need to go line by line, but I'm curious, sort of taking it in whole, if there are any, you know, what, are there any things that council would like to raise? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, through the mayor. I would support all the recommended changes in Attachment 4, including the one that Deputy Director Dahl mentioned tonight, ID number eight, which policy LU 3.12, publicly accessible spaces, so that they're not just welcoming and safe, but they're also easy to access, as per your language. Thank you.
Great. Any other things that stand out in this category? Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you. I would like to start by saying I support all that's in this appendix or attachment with regard to staff recommendations for changes. I think what I want to see, if I could do, is I'd like to maybe bring up a couple of other things that might be in the same element that I would also support. And so if you'll permit me just a moment. Well, maybe I'll just say them, and then hopefully this is relevant. I think it is. And, I mean, one definitely is. Just a small tweak to Land Use 10.1, which I think is in our appendix already through an online comment. Yeah, that replaces the word "consider." And I would just like to pitch that we could also add just the phrase zoning ordinance, maybe right in between general plan and disaster planning in this document, or maybe zoning ordinances. That would just be a humble suggestion. So that's one that I would like to. And then there were a couple of other suggestions from Planning Commission that were not necessarily included within staff recommendations, but I would like to highlight and see if there's council support. One was for potentially implementing a local density bonus for ground-floor retail space and discounting thereof. And so I think I need to go back to maybe the admin report to understand whether that is, in fact, a good comment to make. Or what do you think, Zach? Is that within this section? Is that a fair comment?
This would be a policy that goes in the land use element.
Excellent. I think it's important. It's, I think I heard some public comments that spoke to this idea of, and there may have even been some deliberation earlier on council level that talked about making sure we have our thinking through local ways of encouraging the sort of uses we want within our places. And keeping small business working is certainly important. We have already heard a number of, you know, like, present day in 2023, we're currently in a situation economically where we're having trouble keeping retail clients. And yet we have, and I think we know and value and interest in having ground-floor retail remain a part of the downtown experience and throughout our city when we consider these mixed uses. So I think this suggestion from Planning Commission is interesting and could be a useful tool to include this notion of giving developers a bonus, a density bonus, in exchange for allowing ground-floor retail to be offered at a discounted rate. Because right now, I think one of the challenges for small businesses is, you know, like, getting into downtown with the rents that may exist, especially in our newer buildings, can be prohibitive. So that's one I'd like to highlight. And then one final one, I think in this section, would be, I think it's in this section, translation services. There was a discussion about including translation services in council and city meetings. I think the Planning Commission recommendation was to, like, have, the language that said, like, it seemed to imply that it should be included all the time. And I don't think it necessarily has to be that. I would like to see us consider a lighter, like, pilot-type language. We talked recently, council did, about this when we discussed boards and commissions and how to increase diversity within them. The topic of translation came up, and I mentioned that in asking the public for guidance on this, I was given an idea that Thrive Alliance provides some level of volunteer translation services. So to me, I think, like, that could be something council could consider piloting at council meetings, maybe like the most important meetings, or like general plan meetings, or not necessarily every meeting. So I wanted to see if I could highlight that one, but maybe soften the language to, you know.
Can I make a suggestion? Because I think these are really very meaningful recommendations. And so I think that if we have you go through all of them, then we might lose some of them in the summary. And so, you know, I've been in enough of these meetings where, you know, you kind of do a brain dump, and then when we're at the final stages of deliberation, you can't keep it all straight. So I would recommend, you know, for the sake of clarity and due diligence, really giving each idea the consideration that it deserves, that we take a different approach. And so I'm interested in kind of getting, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down. Do you like this idea or not? Is there council majority on these specific changes? So the, you know, so the first idea, do you mind just summarizing real quick?
Yeah, I would say just adding the phrase zoning ordinances to this 10.1.
Okay, I support. Thumbs up for me.
Thumbs up.
Okay, great, clear.
Hooray. The other one. Thank you.
Okay.
And then including local density bonus, the possibility, like, exploring local density bonus for ground-floor retail discounts.
I like it.
So tied to some sort of community benefit? I like that as well.
That that would be part of the overall updating of the community benefits program, so that that would be one of many things that could be evaluated. Like, I had suggested other things. Director Dahl had said you were going to be working on the community benefits program, so I don't think doing them one-off is as helpful.
I think that makes sense because this would be in that larger community benefits context, so we could look at all the various options. So, yeah, I think that makes sense to put it into that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I just think it should be evaluated.
Do we have a policy? So I appreciate that, and I know that we're on track to do that. I guess my question is, you know, in terms of being consistent and having shared goals reflected in the general plan and the high value of that, and knowing that, it sounds like there's interest across the board to support small businesses and incentivize, you know, subsidized rent programs for, as a general sort of goal. Is that, have we specifically? I know that you have them all memorized, Zach. Do we have anything right now that you can think of that specifically calls out that goal?
For something like this, I think its most logical place would be in the community benefits policy because that's really kind of what it is. It's, you're getting something in exchange for giving something to a project. So the notion here would be offering something to incentivize, it sounds like subsidized ground-floor retail space. So I think that's something that would make sense to explore in our community benefits program, and then spell out, well, what would we be willing to offer if someone was willing to offer?
I completely understand and appreciate what you're saying. My question was, is there a goal specified around community benefits that specifically highlights our interest in supporting nonprofit businesses, supporting small businesses? Is that reflected in a goal right now?
I don't believe that explicitly. I mean, within community benefits or just supporting nonprofits?
The goal of creating community benefits? Is that in the?
That is a policy, yes, that speaks to community benefits and kind of sets forward a policy framework that we would then study in more depth.
Okay, so it's in, so community benefits generally is already included in the general plan. It sounds like we're going through a process to further refine and define them. Are we satisfied with that?
Yeah, I mean, my only comment was, anything that can get, you know, we have some things that have been developed where we have a lot of vacancy, like Station Park Green has two-thirds of their ground-floor retail vacant. Anything we can do to drive business into that space and enable small businesses to have a place that's affordable, I think we should be for. So however we make that happen.
Yeah, and I think, you know, just in terms of our practice of capturing ideas like this and making sure that we're accountable and picking up threads and really juicy nuggets of ideas and carrying them forward to the next conversation, you know, I hope that we have a process for that.
I would just add that when we do the community benefits, we look at all of the goals of the general plan together, and economic vitality is part of that. And so when we look at the community benefits, we look at the community as a whole and all of the benefits that we would want to achieve, and that's part of the outreach and feedback process.
So actually, looking at our community benefits policy, which is LU 2.3, it talks about developing a framework to allow density-intensity bonus concessions in exchange for the provision of community benefits. And one of them already listed is subsidized retail for small businesses.
Brilliant. Look, we already did it.
And then the other piece, also as an action, we do have a, creating an online public portal, a community benefits dashboard that highlights community benefits derived from new development projects. So then being able to communicate that.
That one was mine, thank you. Okay, yes.
Okay.
Language access.
Yes. So going back to the admin report here, I see, let's see, where was it? But at any rate, that was it. It was essentially Explorer adding translation services to city council-commission meetings, not necessarily all meetings, but maybe some of the big ones.
Councilmember, oh, yes.
I think if we're really looking at just from holistically for the city organization, you'd be looking at a citywide translation policy.
Language access policy.
Language access policy. And that also goes with the Title VI policy. It all dovetails into what federal laws are. And when we look at just specifically about when we want to translate meetings specifically, you're going to look at the items that will really impact our minority communities who might have difficulty understanding English. And so that's kind of where you pick and choose, kind of like what you said. When there's a big item that you want to be able to have that access to our community, that's where you'd want to devise that. And happy to take that back to staff and our communications team.
Thank you. And I, you know, I have been asking and supporting, you know, the city to adopt a language access policy, and didn't think about how that might fit into the general plan process. I don't know if this is where it belongs, you know, or if it's a council priorities question. So Zach, help us out.
So within the land use element, we do have a communications section, and that does include equitable access. So there's a number of references that, maybe not overtly, but include the concept of making sure we have materials available and languages, doing targeted outreach to groups that are maybe underrepresented. So it does speak to language in a couple spots. So the framework is there. So maybe this specific target maybe doesn't necessarily need to be in the general plan, but I think in our communications section, it supports looking at a policy like this. So if the council wants to be more explicit in the general plan, they can. But I think the language that they are with support moving forward with this, based on what's currently there.
So I appreciate that. I mean, at the risk of sounding pedantic, I do think, I apologize because, you know, I feel that the admin report itself, and frankly, the Planning Commission earlier when they made such comments, were a decent amount more articulate and being precise than I have been in the last five or 10 minutes. But there are some, like, specific suggestions here, which I finally found. For example, what we were just talking about for language access is indicated as a modification of policy Land Use 9.1 for inclusive outreach. So I guess, and the one about rental rates and density bonuses is considered as adding a new action to Land Use 3. So what I, what I'm a little concerned about is, like, I got the impression earlier, Zach, that those were not part of Attachment 4 because we needed, you know, council direction on interest in these. Whether they become, in fact, new actions and/or modifications to the, you know, these elements, or they're wrapped into other city programs that, you know, lead to concrete next steps, I am agnostic on as long as one of those things occurs. So I'll just leave it at that.
City manager?
I know for a fact we're going to have to bring a Title VI and language access policy to be legally compliant, and so that'll come with that in the future. And I should take care of that.
Okay, those are my comments on this attachment.
Great. Who else?
I think my hand's up.
Oh, Councilmember Hedges, hi. There you are.
I put my hand up to actually support the language issue. Actually have some real-life experience with that. When I was on the Board of Urban Cosmetology, I insisted that we do it, and it made the meetings so much easier for everybody, including people who are language-challenged. My, what had happened in the past was when someone needed translation, whether it was a hit, whether it was a hearing or our general meetings, they would bring a neighbor who often wasn't really well proficiency in English, and it just made it so much easier to have a certified translator present. So I'm very, very supportive of doing this. And good to hear that we're actually going to be required to do it.
Thank you so much. Are we satisfied with this attachment and moving forward?
Yes.
I have some ad hoc things that I want to add too, and I would, would it be best for me to just do that at the end?
No, I think we should do it, yeah, right now.
I'm just not quite sure which go in which attachment, so that's my problem.
Oh, it's not necessarily this attachment?
Oh, okay, I thought we were going by attachment.
Yeah, no, we're on Attachment 4. So are we ready to close the book on Attachment 4?
This is, so anything that you want to see in the land use element?
Yes, okay, so I'll just, through the mayor, if I could just go through what list I've gotten, you can tell me what it's supposed to be. So, okay, so, to have the opportunity for target, have targeted opportunities for increased heights in return for commensurate increase in community benefits that are tied to real community problems. I asked this in my question section. So if there's a lack of affordable housing, that could be part of the community benefit. If solving, like Councilmember Hedges mentioned, doing the flyover for the West Side to Hillsdale Station, that could be another example. So just having, and that aligns with Measure Y and having, you know, commensurate community benefits. So I think that should be called out specifically. And that would be here, I would think. Yes, Director Dahl?
Yes, that would be great. I think this would be added language to the community benefits policy.
Okay, so there's one for other council members.
What's the change? I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not.
So the idea is that, if you want to go, I personally have made up my mind in terms of what I believe the maximum density or maximum height should be, but I'm also open to having something added in that says there are targeted opportunities for higher heights in return for commensurate community benefits. So similar to the structure of measure Y. Am I talking about the structure correctly?
Yes, correct. So where you have your limits, and then in order to have height that goes beyond it, you would be looking for a commensurate community benefit, which if you set the framework, we could then explore in more depth when we move forward with that policy.
Okay, does everyone understand? I personally am very interested in that.
I am very interested in that.
Nodding heads, great.
Okay.
I just, I have one more thing. Sorry.
Council, I think that, can we, can we get through Deputy Mayor's?
Oh, I thought she was through, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
She's just starting. Then also having an annual general plan review where staff presents to council and the public on progress made under the general plan and addresses any major variances in actually what has happened or in population growth changes or whatever by reopening that portion of the general plan. This we discussed earlier tonight to say, there was a lot of discussion about whether population projections were accurate, and I think the way to deal with that is to come back and do an annual report card on our progress. And one of the items is, well, how is our projection about population lining up with what reality is showing us?
Can I ask, how would you, how would you operationalize that if we're only getting census data every, at most every five years?
I think this would be, that's a very good question. I think the, most of it would be about other things in the general plan, the report card, and maybe the population growth would only be every five years. But the idea is to make sure that we are staying aligned with, number one, showing the public what has happened, and number two, if, who knows, maybe if projections are to be flat, maybe they go up 25%. If that happens, then we're going to want to do some realigning. Or if they go down 25% versus our population forecast, my hope is that we can just have a reality check in every year, and maybe it's longer for population, but to have a reality check.
Yeah, so I mean, I think I've heard from council, though, strong interest across the board of having, you know, sort of a process that we establish to show our work and our progress. And so, you know, we've talked about dashboard solutions, we've talked about ways to make our council priority progress more accountable and transparent and formula, like more easily accessible. So maybe this kind of folds into just an overarching communication, an outreach plan? I'm looking at.
So in looking at overall of what we're, we're going to be doing an annual report regardless with the housing report that we have to do by law, and it sounds like the land use piece, what we also do get is every January, the Department of, State Department of Finance actually gives us our population projections. So you don't have to actually wait the five years, we actually get that information every year so that we kind of know what's going on. I don't know, Zach, from planning, do you guys utilize that, or that's just one more point of reference, right? Oh, you just went.
Yeah, I think if something where we included, when we do our APRs, included information, the latest population information from the Department of Finance, I think that's easy to add, and that's another data point that then council could factor in when you're receiving our annual progress reports on our housing element and our land use element, and then we'll be providing annual progress on development activity in the city. So then we can include the DOF numbers.
Sounds good to me. Nodding heads, yes? Okay.
I just have a follow-up, not on this item, but the previous item, Deputy Mayor Nash, where we talked about just community benefit itself, because I have to think about just trying to understand, getting direction from the council, and I just saw five heads nod, but when we have to actually go to a ballot measure consultant, really thinking about just what does that mean? So when you're talking about just overall height, is that high one, or is it medium to high one, or high one to high two? Just so I, I kind of need to know, because I just saw five heads nod, but I need to know what is exactly, when you're talking about community benefits, what does that mean?
I was thinking we were going to talk about high one, high two at a different point, if we want to talk about that now.
I think why don't we, why don't we table that conversation to, it's because we're making some progress on what we're doing right now, and so, and I think that it's, you know, it's an outstanding question that we need to better define, or maybe define a process around how we want to answer that question.
So the direction that I've had from council right now is just that you're interested in having some type of community benefit and allow something for it, and we'll have that further discussion that second half, I guess, when we talk about the heights. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Targeted.
I know you won't forget.
Exactly, okay. I just want to make sure, because I don't want to leave tonight, you know, I want to make sure I have the direction. Thank you.
Okay.
I do have a comment about the, looking back every year to see about the population changes. I think what's sort of gone over the heads of most of our speakers tonight is we have a huge population of people that are driving in here every day and polluting our lives here because they're trying to make a living, and often don't stay long because of the long, and add to the problem of hiring. And so part of building more housing here is to accommodate those people that actually want to work here, that aren't living here now. So there's a huge population of people that would like to live here. I had one woman ask me that's at Home Depot, if she could find anybody that would give her apartment, she has three kids in Oakland, and she works at Home Depot, she wanted to live here, but nobody would take her Section 8 voucher. So I know there's a large number of people that don't live here now that work here that would like to live here, and we need to accommodate them as well.
I appreciate that point, and I think that, you know, maybe when we're talking about benchmarking population, that we also look at other data points like, you know, percentage of folks that are working outside the county and that are commuting in, the things that we've, you know, data points that we've already established to develop this plan that might be carried over to the extent possible, so that we're looking not just at population growth alone, but at a bigger set of, you know, of a data picture to tell the whole more comprehensive story of our progress.
Okay.
Nodding heads? Okay. Deputy Mayor, are you still going?
Yes, I'm still going, thank you. I, I'm agreeing with staff's proposed changes to Palm Avenue to change it from medium two to service commercial. That seems to be land use to me. Are we talking about that now?
That would, so with the land use element itself, and then we have attachment five, which will be the land use.
Okay, then I will not mention that. Campus Drive, is that part of this section?
This would be that. The land use map two.
Okay, okay, great. That's why I'm asking. Let's see. I'm supporting Councilmember Lorraine's recommendation about the placement of outdoors spaces away from the highway, as well as Deputy Director Dahl's suggestion of prioritizing indoor space for those sites. Yep, I think that's it.
Were those, were those ones in that, in this section, or was that a different section? The air quality?
The placement of outdoor space was in this one, it was within the policy related to office, office parks in transition. So it could be included as a separate policy or broadened within that policy, but if there's support for that, we can find the best location for it.
Okay.
That would most likely live in the housing element.
It looked like there was broad support.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Okay, Councilmember Hedges, your hand is still up. Now it's down, okay.
I can lower my hand, I always, I keep myself on mute. I'm in a hotel in case there's any loud noises here.
Are we, are you, are you going to go through attach, your comments on attachment four?
Yeah, I'm ready if you're ready for me.
Okay, so, so if you're in agreement with it, then great. If you have any tweaks you want to make, please highlight those. I don't, if you, if you just want to, you know, I think that we don't need to, we don't need to go through anything that unless it's a change you're suggesting.
I want to agree with it. One of the things I think that not everybody's agreed on is I'm okay with the Palm Avenue keeping for service jobs. And the one thing, and I think it would probably go here, is better access from the west side to Caltrain. That's very important. I mean, it's just maddening. I'm just standing with Josh Becker, and he was looking at it, and he said, what's this? You know, how do people from the west side get over it? I said, they, they walk three blocks. So if they can figure out how to do it. So we really have to find a way to put that in, I think. Zach, can you, can you enlighten me whether we can do that or not?
Yes, definitely. I think there is some language that in the circulation element, we can make sure that that's stronger if that's not there, but the focus would be improved access from the west side to the Hillsdale Caltrain Station, and I'm seeing concurrence there, so we can definitely get that in.
Actually, it's not improved, it is just plain access.
Establish access.
Yeah. Well, I would also, can I, can I offer a slight expansion of that? I think that west side access to all Caltrain stations should be evaluated and considered. Like, for example, at the downtown San Mateo Caltrain station, we, if you want to, if you're walking from the west side to go northbound, you have to walk two blocks out of your way with a bicycle, and people are climbing over fences and broken holes and, you know, and concrete to get, you know, through onto the platform. And so I, I think overall, there's a strong, you know, need to look at west side access. And I know this was already called out in our pedestrian, our pedestrian master plan, is that what it is? The pedestrian master plan? So, but I think that that would be great to have that reflected in, as a goal or strengthened in a goal specifically. Nodding heads? Great. Anything else? Okay, look at, we're making so much progress, and it's 10:40. So.
It's 12:40 where I am.
Okay, are we ready to move on to another attachment? Oh, no, okay.
I'm sorry, I apologize, but I realized that, I think I just wanted to ask for clarification regarding air pollution, so I think, I want to mention, well, so I realized that's maybe not in this attachment. Zach, you brought up a new tweak to open space and open space action, and I'm in support of that. But there was another, there was another suggestion from Planning Commission related to land use related to air pollution, that said, add text to LU 8.6 to ensure that open space is aggregated away from pollution sources to the greatest extent possible. And I was actually, I got a little confused because I wasn't sure if that was something staff was, had already considered integrating, or if that's something I should bring up for council approval.
That wasn't something that we had specifically integrated. We did identify that there was other policies that appeared to cover it. The aggregate, we weren't exactly clear how that would actually materialize in a project. I think placing open space as far away from the pollution source as possible, we, that is in there. So I think that's kind of the same concept. I don't know what the aggregating is, or I guess it's, yeah, I think we're already addressing that through placement of open space as far away from the highway as possible, unless there's something I'm missing there.
Oh, I don't know. So I will withdraw.
And I will also just note with the general plan, these are parameters, so that doesn't preclude us if there's something there that maybe is more explicit as part of when we're going through the zoning code or adopting subsequent policies to, to actually implement what's in the general plan. So that being said, if we're providing that overarching framework, we can still revisit if there's something there that maybe wasn't specifically addressed in the general plan, we'll still be able to do it when we move forward with.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on.
Question, just kind of as I'm thinking this through, would, would putting on the general plan, having some mechanism in place to have grade separation for downtown Caltrans fall under this?
This was circulation, and we do have a policy to support grades, the remaining grade separations, but yeah, this would, this would be best in our circulation element. But I know that currently we do have a policy that speaks to moving forward with grade separations.
So I mean, it's in our 40-year, 20-year plan for 2040.
Yeah, it is, yes.
Okay.
Okay, good. Anyone else on this, this attachment?
This meeting four, it's on four. Did we go to five?
I'm trying, I'm trying to move us forward. Are we on the new one? Are we on five?
Five.
Okay, we made it to five. Okay, does anyone have anything to say about this one slide? Are we good with this?
I'm okay.
No, Campus Drive is another one.
No, this would be under attachment five, but it's not, but yeah, so we will have, I believe, eight here, and then we'll also include the Campus Drive, and then the other one that speaks to the land use table.
Okay, on this slide, are we, are we good with this slide right now that's showing? Thumbs up.
Can I just ask a question? Sorry. So the red on this map for number two would be like where Bevmo and Aladdin Market are?
Yeah, those are those two strip malls there on the, on the south side of Hillsdale.
So we're just saying that that would not be residential, that would be maintained as neighborhood commercial?
So that's proposed, that's, what's changed is the hatched kind of triangular shaped site, it's right next to the police station. It's an existing service station, it was identified as residential medium one, and we're recommending neighborhood commercial to align with the service station use.
I'm sorry, I think that's the car wash, isn't it? Yep.
Or is it the service station car wash? Yeah.
Car wash, yeah. Okay, yes, I'm okay with that. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying, though.
Okay, let's move on. All right, so this is, this is if you have something important to say or tweak about this slide.
And I would just, these are also considered cleanups where there's no intensity change, it's just better aligning with uses.
I'm thumbs up. Thumbs up, okay, move on. Thumbs up.
Yeah, so the first one is the study area, removing the park, church parking lot from the study area three, and the second one is Palm Avenue.
I was convinced by your, you know, your points about maintaining the service commercial, and it sounds like we can't split, split the baby, although I wish we could. How are you feeling?
Yeah, I understand. The only comment I would make, just using this map to make it really simple, is where you see the beige on the left, I could very easily see that upper sliver becoming condominium complexes. In fact, the little tiny square right there that's beige, or is it beige or yellow? beige, yellow? I don't know. This little square right here, south of East 20th, that's already condos surrounded by industrial. And I think that sliver would make a lot of sense to, to potentially become, so yeah, from there up, potentially being condominium and apartment complexes. It fits that neighborhood already. So I don't know if we have to do all, then I, then I understand it. If we can, if we can split the baby, then I would want to, but I understand if we can.
If you wanted to leave that finger as mixed use, and then the rest as service commercial, that's very doable.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Perfect.
I'm good with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
And so this is actually, this is study area seven, and the next slide comprises, these are those, those higher density multifamily along the 101 corridor.
That we're lowering to medium one because of the considerations for air quality. Nodding heads, great, let's move on. Rich, I, if, please speak up if we're, if you have something.
Can't see my head.
Well, sometimes I forget to look.
Okay, so yes, I'm fine.
Okay, let's move on.
So that was the end of the attachment 5, so then the next one would be the Campus Drive request. The owner had requested an office high. The staff recommendation had been an office medium, but it's up to council where you want to go with that one. And right now, and it's currently is a residential medium 2.
Through the mayor?
This is the 2929 Campus Drive? Yes.
Thank you. I think the gentleman, Mr. Tarleton, who spoke during public comment, and his point, as I heard, one of the points was that most of the businesses there are life science, and the office medium currently has some kind of restrictive language about research companies, and that he requested if you can't do office high, if you want to do office medium, to remove that phrase.
Yeah, so that phrase isn't restrictive so much as, because it's speaking in general to all of our office medium around the city, that not every location is conducive to that. But it's not saying you can't do it in office medium. It's saying that would be more location-specific to where it could be allowed, and we would probably get more specific to it in the zoning code. I think there's also a broader discussion that we'll probably bring forward when we have bandwidth and time permits about life sciences and how we want to permit them. And I think there's interest in maybe looking at making them a special use just so we can add appropriate operational conditions to those. So that may be across the board, but that language isn't explicit in excluding life sciences so much as saying not every office medium location around the city is necessarily suited for it.
Okay, just as long as this particular situation is resolved, that if it's office medium, he can continue with what he's doing.
Yes, that wouldn't preclude it. It's permitted what's out there right now, and what he's got permits to move forward with.
Okay.
Through the mayor, may I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Zach, why can't we do office high there? It not only gives them what he asked for, but it also, if later housing is built there, will get a little better jump on the housing, higher density.
You could definitely do that. The recommendation was to align with the current office use there, but if council's preference is to go office high, that's definitely doable.
I'm interested in office high as well, and I would love to encourage the life science development, which brings jobs and community investments. And if you just take a look at South City and some of their new facilities.
A little different, yes.
We, you know, if there's a way to bring those resources home, that would be very desirable. Can we count it through?
Three buildings in my neighborhood are being converted, and there's been one on the Alameda that's converted some time ago, so it's a going thing, and I think we allow office high. Thank you.
Okay, so we have two for office high. Is there a third? Okay, great. All five. Good.
And then the next one is this request to change the low-end ranges for mixed-use medium one and office. And the staff recommendation was for both office, low and medium, just set a maximum, not a minimum. But you can see that's what the request is, and then the staff recommendation.
Didn't we talk about 15 units as opposed to 20 on this one?
The applicant had requested a floor of 15.
I think you can always do 20. I think to make sure we get some for-sale housing, we go to 15.
I'm comfortable with, I mean, I'm comfortable with going as low as 15, just because it provides more optionality.
And this would be specific to MU1? Or mixed-use medium one?
Yes. Are we good with that? Okay, good.
And then the staff recommendation for just a maximum but no minimum for the two office categories? Is that supportable?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Yes.
I'm okay with it as well.
So then, if that includes, that concludes all of the staff recommendations. If there's anything else on the land use map, this would be the time.
I do have a comment, but I'm not sure it was on one of the maps.
Did we cover the acquisition policy? Did we ever get to that slide?
Which one was this?
The acquisition policy.
That one would be under Attachment 6, because that one, it will go in our Public Services and Facilities element. So yes, we can bring that one up for when Attachment 6 comes up.
So on land use, I'd like to make a comment.
Oh, please do.
So I noticed on the land use maps that it has Shoreview listed as an equity priority community. Just a little background, I've actually asked the city about that. It's told it wasn't. And MTC's told me it wasn't, and I'm so happy we're recognizing it now, because that brings the ability to more easily get grants for safe routes to school projects, and there's been none so far done on the east side. So I think it gives us a win and be able to get some of the bike lanes and some of the safety things for the schools over there. So thank you for putting it in the map. Do we need to state that, or is that self-evident?
So the equity proprietor community designation, so that's in the general plan. So yeah, that's affirmed with, unless council specifically said they wanted to revisit that.
It's already baked in.
This is new, so I'm actually congratulating you for putting it in there, because I've been rebuffed a couple of times by different agencies on bringing this up.
Thank you. I think it's adequately covered, and so I thank you for elevating it in this conversation. I don't see any need to change what we're doing. Right? Let's move on.
So Zach, you're recommending the addition to the publicly accessible spaces. That's already been covered, correct?
Yes, we got concurrence on that one.
Thank you.
So this would be Attachment 6, so it's introduction glossary, and then other general plan sections that topics have come up in.
I'm comfortable with all of these. Okay. Yes?
Yes.
All right, we have unanimous support. I see Rich's head.
Yeah, and so then there was, we'll slide back, the property acquisition.
Okay, so some of you were at the general plan subcommittee meeting, and maybe you've watched them online. This idea of having a dedicated policy to look at how to align the city's needs with, you know, in terms of our growing demand for services and facilities and open space, and have an expansive and hopefully more encompassing approach to land acquisition, where there has been no policy. So this is something that, you know, that I strongly support, and so is there any issue here? Thumbs up? Great. And then I also support the additional ease-to-access language. Are we good? Thumbs up, thumbs up.
So that brings to the topic of High 1 and High 2.
Okay, we got through the easy stuff. Okay, so for, you know, the question of High 1 and High 2, I think I'll start that I, you know, I feel really, you know, I've invested almost five years, or maybe now more than five years of my life in this process. I was on the general plan subcommittee when I was a commissioner. And I, you know, I think a lot of us have a very keen awareness of the need for affordable housing. As many of you know, I lived in affordable housing. I feel it's really important to look at the call from community, community that I think we care about, the community that supported our, you know, our opportunity to even serve. I know that several of us up here on the dais were endorsed by the Sierra Club, that we are, want to listen to our affordable housing community, our sustainability advocates, that are saying that High 2 needs to be at least considered. And so my concern is that if we make a decision right now, taking options off the table without the advantage of a full and unbiased polling data on what community benefits could get us, how people treat and understand community benefits and relationship to height and density, that we actually could be fumbling at the finish line and really looking at advancing a process without as much information as we need. And so my suggestion is that we, that we look at ways of expediting, you know, the hiring and better defining the next step of polling and getting a ballot consultant so that we can have a neutral, unbiased, objective professional to help us look at what the strategies for success could be. And what we might find through polling is that High 2 is unpassable, right? Even with community benefits, or that we don't want to take that risk. That is absolutely a possibility, but we don't even know what the possibility could be if we don't test for it. And what we have not done in this process is AB testing. And in the absence of methodology that I think will stand up to scrutiny in our approach to developing a ballot measure that we can all get behind, it's really, it jeopardizes, I think, the whole process. We have invested years of our lives. The community has turned out to support and engage in this process. We've spent millions of dollars. And at this point in time, I think that there's an opportunity to get a more refined picture that is statistically valid and data-based so that we can know with clear certainty that what we advance on the ballot will pass and that it actually is fully reflective of the will of the community. And so I'm interested to hear from my council, you know, what you think about that. And as you, you know, as you consider this idea, I hope that you'll be thinking also about what we could, you know, the way that, what this could possibly open up in the way of community benefits, knowing that we need funding for dredging, knowing that we need funding to, you know, to help folks convert to, you know, electric and retrofit their homes, and that we need, you know, we need money for our roads, and that we need, you know, money to fund, you know, our safe routes to school programs and our, you know, all of the infrastructure needs that are nearly totaling $250 million of unfunded need. And so I, you know, I, as somebody who's been at this since the first day of the first meeting, I have always said, "We want to do what the community will support," and that we need to support a process with full integrity and as much information as possible. And so I think that it would be incredibly premature to take High 2 off of consideration without folding it into the ballot testing process, because right now, we don't know how, you know, how this will be treated at the ballot. We don't, and we don't know what kind of community benefits we would be leaving off the table and the resources that we could bring back to community. We will never know the answer if we don't ask those questions. And so that's my position. I'm curious to hear your thoughts. Councilmember Hedges.
I understand and value your history, but I have history too. I've been involved in several site fights, and I'll just talk about Bay Meadows. So my experience with Bay Meadows is that the people that want to stop the development are not barred by the truth. I've stood by tabling from the Bay Meadows people and heard them exaggerate what was going to be there. And I'm telling you right now, if we do High 2, the mantra will be stop the 12 stories plus the additional density bonuses. I think that it's very dangerous, based on the polling we had now, to consider High 2, especially when they were smart enough to poll 12 stories and see the support for the 12 stories drop. And I think you could probably guess that when they talk about 10 stories for High 1, that it'll drop to the approximate polling that was for High 2 at 10 stories. So for those reasons, and knowing the fights that I've gone through and how close it was, we were 40 signatures away. If they had 40 more signatures, they'd have gotten it on the ballot. And that's with us putting signature gatherers next to them on every day and competing with them for signatures. So I know how hard the folks that want to freeze this city in amber work to keep it that way, and I think it's a real mistake to give them something that they can snipe at pretty easily. So I'm going to stay with High 1, but I understand your arguments and would like to have those extra things too. But we're still going to get increased density and increased bonuses from High 1. That's all I'll say for now. I have comments later.
Go ahead. Through the mayor, I appreciate your position, and I appreciate what a number of people said tonight in public comment, but I also appreciate the position of people who see eight and think eight, 10 and think 10, when we know that there could be an additional two, which is why the 12 was asked in the survey. And I'm very comfortable with doing High 1, but the idea of having the opportunity to do targeted height incentives for commensurate community benefit, in my mind, gives us an opportunity in a couple of specific places to say, "Here's a place where it might make sense to go a little bit higher if we solve that Hillsdale problem or if we put affordable housing somewhere else." So it allows us to be surgical without opening everything up, and High 1 is already a large increase from where we are today. And I think, you know, as I keep saying, people really aren't arguing about numbers. They're arguing about impact on quality of life. But since we have to come up with numbers, I am very comfortable with High 1, and I would not be comfortable with High 2. But I would want to have that targeted opportunity for height incentives for commensurate community benefits.
Above High 1?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not talking about, I'm not saying this is for everything. I'm saying for, there may be individual opportunities. This is not an open the door for all the places that are currently marked as High 2.
I mean, it's really encouraging to hear support, a majority of council supporting openness to High 2, right? With commensurate benefits, which is exactly what I'm saying. And I'm saying we can make that decision with the benefit of the polling.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying I'm comfortable with High 1, and with High 1, there are going to be many opportunities for people to get density bonus. So that goes from eight, up to eight, up to 10. I'm saying that there could be, and I don't know, and this is where I'm asking staff to come back with a recommendation, is there something we can do that is very targeted, very surgical, that would allow a height incentive for commensurate community benefit? I think there's a lot of work to be done to figure out what that is, and it's very targeted. It's not, "Let's approve High 2." It's not, let's approve High Two. So that's, that's.
I hear what you're saying. I actually think that we're saying the same thing. And I, I'm curious to hear from our city manager because my, you know, my understanding is that we, we want, we want to approve, you know, a land use map and tonight, hopefully, if, I guess, you know. But there's, there's strong interest in aligning a community benefit program with High Two where it makes sense, right? And where we get sufficient community benefit in a surgical way, not a by rate way, right? So I'm curious, from your perspective, city manager, how would that change our process and timeline and approach?
So.
If I could just add one thing in terms of my understanding, this is something that has worked with Measure Y. It was on the ballot, it was understood, it was passed and it's been, it's, it's law. This is not, this is building on what's there, so.
So this is similar to what I'm understanding because I'm on week 11, just getting up to speed. It's the 55 to the 75 foot jump, basically, from what I'm understanding with Measure Y, specifically if there's some type of community benefit. Zach, Christina, is that correct? Okay, I just want to make sure. So, so what I need to better understand for overall direction from staff is, we're talking about surgical, we're talking about targeted. So where? You guys need to tell me, as a decision-making body, you know, provide me that kind of, where, where do you guys think being surgical of where you'd want to see? I heard Hillsdale a little bit, right?
That could be one.
One.
We have something in law today that says exactly that.
So it'd mirror, basically, where we're at a measure, like, Zach, I'm going to look at you. So I know that with, right now, what's in current law, there are tiered systems, right, of where you could go all the way max height of like 75 feet on their Measure Y. Correct, Zach?
That is. And I think I need to go back and look specifically to, on a, but there's a framework that identifies targeted locations where with community benefits, the height limit goes from 55 to 75. I think we need to go back and look at how exactly that's worded and how that could translate. So that wouldn't necessarily be a land use category on a land use map. It would be a provision that, that sets the framework. But we, yeah, I, we'd need to go back and look at it more specifically.
But I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the existing land use map has parcels specified that allow 75 feet with community benefit. So it had, so my read of our current land use map is that those, those specific parcels have already been called out. It's not, it's not just a policy, you know, that's not, that's untethered to specific parcels.
There are parcels that are identified, but we'd have to go and look at how that was set up.
Okay.
I can enlighten a little bit on this because I've lived with it, if I may speak.
Well, I guess the, you know, the, the question is, you know, what's the, what's the path forward if there's majority council interested in, you know, in, in allowing for some exploration of this? Is it something where we say, we're interested in community benefit? I mean, from my perspective, High Two, the designated areas for High Two have already been established, right? In, through the general plan process. So, so maybe that we're talking about just applying a community benefit program, you know, for those, those part, those, those parcels that have already been designated as High Two. And, and the community benefit program, you know, has been defined. The alternative approach I hear is we say, okay, well, you know, we, we only want to consider it through, in Hillsdale, for example. I, I guess I just, I question that approach.
So here, just to point a clarity from what I heard from the deputy mayor, just overall of, talking about being targeted and surgical is probably different than what I'm under, how I'm hearing it. So, so, so wanting to see clarity is, is that I believe that being targeted and surgical, we understand that there's High Two areas that, that have been identified. But what I'm hearing from the deputy mayor is even being even more surgical.
Correct.
As to where that is, not the blanket piece. That's kind of what I'm understanding and what I've been hearing.
Correct, yes. Yeah.
So how, so I guess my question would be, how, how does that look? And what is that, what are the implications in revising a map?
So I, I mean, I think there's the question of, does the council want to see High Two on the land use map? And then.
No.
That's a, wherever the majority lies with that. And then the second part is interest in a community benefits program that could achieve maybe a High Two height, but I don't know if the parameter could say, do you start within a quarter mile of a Caltrain station? Or it's something like that where maybe it's not identified specific parcels yet, but a parameter that we could then work with and then come back in the final general plan with a, a framework that then could, I guess, be honed from there. So I think there is a question that we, we would like an answer on tonight, which is, should High Two stay on the land use map or not? And then there's this second question where you could still look at what could be achieved in High Two. I don't know if it's just the height or if it's up to the 200 units an acre. But then where, where would, what would be the parameters? Where would you want to see that done? So we could then go back and kind of craft that parameter to go into the general plan.
I like the idea of the .25 mile radius to transit.
I'm just thinking from a point of, or it could be the alternative is, you want High One, but you're looking at specific, right? What you're saying, .25 miles from a train station, what does that look like for High Two?
With community benefit.
That's, you have to provide some type of.
Yeah, we'd have to.
Yeah, that's the whole thing.
Right. I would not want to have High Two as a designation on the land use map. Let me be clear. But to your point, there could be High One with, and I don't know what the parameters are. That was what I was asking for staff to come back and give a recommendation on as to what would make most sense. But yes.
So it's like a 1A?
Yeah. Okay, 1A. There we go.
So when you get a chance to let me speak, I can clarify what's happening.
Go for it.
Thank you. Please do.
Okay, so the two areas that are primed for this, it's very, very restricted, is the Bridgepoint Shopping Center and the office buildings around it. And that has been used and it created about $300,000 public benefit. But that has to be approved by the city council to, A, do the extra height and B, to get the proper community benefit. So the, all the crossroads is the other location where you could go 75 feet. So my preference would be, if we're going to do this, to have High One in the land use map and allow closer to High Two at the Hillsdale and the Hayward Park train stations, but not downtown. I, first of all, I don't think it's realistic to go any higher downtown, even probably are never going to get anything right around the train station because of what's there now, anytime in, in my lifetime and maybe anybody else's lifetime here. But anyway, my, my, my predilection would be for, for Hayward Park and for Hillsdale. And I think it makes perfect sense for Hillsdale because it may make a better development for the shopping center. And I think they would be willing to do a, a very healthy benefit for that site to get that right. So that's my position. Those two areas for, within a quarter mile, not a half mile. And with, with, with community benefits that we can either outline or leave up to the current city councils at the time they come forward with it. But it has to be both, two things have to be approved. It has to be, the additional height has to be approved along with and corollary, the public benefit. And, and keep High One as the, as the, on the map as a land use designation.
Help me understand, Zach. I thought that you, you can't have a land use map that has High One caps and then, and then create a policy that allows for above High One with community benefit without designating those, those specific parameters or boundaries because then you wouldn't have, you know, a consistent land use map that, you know, that we would be taking to the ballot, then you would have the, you know, then, then the zoning code amendments flow from. So I'm, I'm, I, I don't under, I, help me if I'm not understanding, but I thought the assignment was that we need to have a land use map that specifies the maximum height and then we're talking about creating conditions and policies and boundaries for the land use map.
So I'm happy to, so what we're looking at is, you'd have, say, High One, what, what we're looking at, but then you'd have some type of, we have to have that policy discussion here this evening of what, what is, is it the quarter mile that we're talking about with these two specific train stations? That's kind of what, what we're looking, when, when I'm hearing kind of the interest of, you want to keep this at High One, so then what is the policy area of what we're looking at to allow, if there's a community benefit, significant community benefit, where, where is that specifically on the map?
Yeah, so, and I'll defer to our city attorney on this too, but you can have a land use map and then have a policy that speaks to how you could build on it. So you don't have to have it on the land use map to still have a policy that outlines how you could offer a density bonus, say, or, or incentive in exchange for community benefits. It's the nature of a community benefits program, you're offering more than what you would typically offer. And so, I mean, the parameter here could be, if you're within a quarter mile of, say, Hayward Park or Hillsdale and you're in a High One zone, you are eligible, you could request, and up to council consideration, however you want to frame it, additional height with commensurate community benefits, something like that. I'm just kind of trying to pull together what, but maybe the, the qualifier is you have to already be High One to even be considered. Maybe that's the gatekeeper. And be, say, within a quarter mile of a, of a Caltrain station or these two Caltrain stations.
I would agree with that. I think you can integrate the two and say, okay, if it's no High Two, just High One, this is the land use designation, with additional height within certain parameters as spelled out like in a separate policy. I mean, you, you could have those two integrated so that there was no conflict between a land use designation and a policy. I mean, which is basically what Zach had indicated. But I think what we need to understand, as Alex was saying, is what are the parameters of the policy? What, you know, what, what sort of rules would you want to create? Like, are we talking about a quarter mile of a train station? Or like, and, and what areas are we talking about? As much specificity as possible as the council can give tonight. I think we'd go a long way towards providing staff with, with parameters to come back with, you know, at the, at the final stage.
And for the ballot measure?
So, so Zach has proposed some language which is, which I think is interesting. So only High One would be eligible, right? Or the ones that are High One or High Two on this map? So basically, everything that's with blue or green, right? Would be, so everything would revert to High One? Blue, that's blue and green, right?
And to reference, the, those radiuses are half-mile radiuses. So if you're talking quarter mile, those would, would be pulled in by half.
Okay, so everything, everything in blue and green goes to High One? And then Zach is suggesting .5 mile radius to transit.
.25.
.25 mile radius to transit with community benefits to be defined that would allow up to High Two. I'm interested in that idea.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Do we have to call it High Two? Or can we call it High One? I mean, honestly, if you look at what's going on with the state right now, we, we have laws in place to cap us at five stories, but we have height density bonuses the state brings in that adds another two frequently. So how is this any different than that, I guess would be my question in persona. I mean, if we make it High One and then have clauses in, in certain zones that you can build, as, as Alex called it, High One A, you know, is, is that, is that feasible? Because I think from a public perception, it's going to be a lot easier for, easier pill for the, the public to swallow if we keep the land designation mapped to H1 and not H2. And I'll, I can go into that more if you guys want, but, but I mean, that's, that's my take. I think it's, it's a much more stomachable and perhaps something we can actually get to pass at the ballot. And I, I'm really, and I think we've heard this from, from Councilman Hedges and Deputy Mayor Nash, I'm very skeptical that if we move forward with H2 on the, on the land designation map, I, I just do not think it's going to pass. And, and if I look back at, you know, historically, where we were before we had the Measure Y ballot, they only, they only polled for eight story and 12 story, but eight story polled at 65% and 12 story polled at 52%. Then you look at what passed and it didn't pass by much of a margin, 50.5 by 49.5. But that's a big drastic drop from 65% to 50.5%.
That's not apples to apples. The 65, the 65% poll was a community-wide survey, not a likely voter survey. So I, I just, I think, I.
I mean, that, that actually makes my argument more. I mean, we should be talking about likely voters, not what the public perception is.
Right. We are talking, we are talking about likely voters.
If you look at 20, so sorry, just let me finish this thought. If you look at again where they started before they did the second polling, adding 12 stories, it came in at 60% for eight and 52% for 10. That's less than where they were prior to the Measure Y. So, I mean, and 52 resonates because they had 52% before Measure Y that said they would be for 20, for 12 story. Now, the, before we go into the, the density zones and we just talked about urban sprawl, you know, spreading it equally throughout the community, they're at 52%. So, I mean, I just, I look at it and think, why do we want to run down this rabbit hole and then fail? I, I think we're much more set up for success and we can get, I believe, the, the backing behind H1. And I think, so my, my take is, just to put it on the table, is I'm, I'm backing H1, I'm not backing H2.
With, so, and you're not, and you're also not open to community benefits or going anything above H1 with community benefits?
I would, but I wouldn't brand it as H2, as H2, for the reasons I've said.
I mean, hopefully this conversation is not about branding right now. We're just.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, I wouldn't package it that way. Maybe branding's not the right word, but.
I totally, I totally appreciate that we, you know, when we're talking about a communication strategy, we, we want to make sure we're using language that is accurate and also tenable and not loaded. And I appreciate the point that High Two and calling it High Two is loaded. But the, my question is, from a policy standpoint, you know, are, where are you with, you know, the, the interesting idea that I think there's support for of allowing for anything, you know, something above High One with community benefit?
I'm lukewarm to it, just because, and, and, I mean, again, it's.
So neutral?
Yeah, I'd say neutral.
Okay. So I think we have, I, I, excuse me. I think, you know, from what I hear, it sounds like there is majority support for consideration of a community benefit program that goes above High One with yourself and the minority of you all.
I'm beginning to have second thoughts. I'm beginning to have second thoughts.
I have a question about if it was within a quarter mile, what does that mean in terms of looking at where, what does that, what does that mean of Hillsdale and Hayward Park?
It's about two city blocks.
So versus what's on the map right now for High Two, it's, right, but it would only be, I can't point, but just down a little bit right there.
Be about half of the size of those circles.
But if we're saying next to Hillsdale or Hayward Park, then downtown's not included.
So are you asking if it would cover the full scope of Hillsdale Mall? What, would there be parcels left out in, in a .25 mile radius?
When I'm, when I'm talking about strategic or surgical, I'm talking about one building, maybe one building. I'm not talking about two blocks full of High Two.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, please.
Just something that, and maybe I'm jumping in a little bit at the wrong time because I was thinking of it a little bit earlier as you guys were, were beginning. But one thing that you guys could think of, if you didn't want to think about it so geographically, like making a radius or making a buffer or tying it to a station, is you could make criteria and a process for the sites that you wanted to consider. And so, and not tying it to High Two, which is something that you, we already have a clear definition for. So maybe if you wanted to make a program that you wanted to allow exceedances of High One in exchange for. One in exchange for a community benefit, maybe it's parcels over a certain size, where you know that it can be a certain quality of a development that you want to see, that you know that that site can fit a certain amount of development, that has a certain amount of potential, that you're going to realize the quality of development that you want to see. And maybe you establish a process that it comes before the council, so you know you have the proper oversight over that parcel. And maybe you don't put that cap on it, or that minimum or maximum, that it's exactly commensurate with what we're looking at in High Two. Maybe you give yourselves the flexibility and the discretion to decide what's appropriate for the site when it comes to you. And in order to account for it, we bake that into the language, we bake that into the policy and the land use map and the ballot language. I mean, deferring, of course, to our city attorney, that comes before you guys and before the voters, so that it's, it's, it's planned for. And so you have that flexibility to be able to look at it with discretion, and by giving yourselves that discretion, you are surgical as you move through it, and you don't lock yourself into a number or into a location, and you can do it where it works best. And then as the city evolves over time, whichever way it is, you have the flexibility at that point in time for that development. I mean, what if it's .3 miles instead of .25? What if it's Hillsdale and one of the Hillsdale parcels is outside of that radius? We've also talked about areas that are ripe for master plans, like Bridgepoint and like Hillsdale, but then you're kind of cherry picking which site makes sense. And maybe there's other sites, and we get the property owner and they come before us, like Crossroads, which I think Councilmember Hedges mentioned, and, you know, they have a vision for that site, and we're like, oh, and it's not in the right location. And so I, I think maybe there's another way to come at it.
Such helpful input at this stage in the conversation. Thank you for moving us forward. I, I think that, you know, Christina's really helped us thread a needle. It's really hard for us to, you know, to write policy on the spot, right? And I think she's providing us the framework of a potential solution that would achieve the surgical strategy that I think the deputy mayor is looking at, and, and not ham, and while at the same time not hamstringing us by arbitrary boundaries that have not been fully analyzed. And at, you know, 11:30 PM, don't really have the benefit of, you know, a, a full consideration. So I, I think that that's, you know, a really interesting approach that, that I personally would support. And, you know, if we were to go forward with that plan, like, what would a timeline look like, and how would that fit into our process? Zach, I'm asking you, what would the timeline and a process look like? Or Christina?
I think, as our city manager noted, we still need the parameters. Maybe, I think, what Christina had mentioned was, maybe we think of them slightly differently, but we're still need council to weigh in on what those parameters would be that we develop.
Tonight?
Yes, because of the nature of this issue, I mean, if, if they're left open-ended, we, staff doesn't want to be in the position of having to guess where it needs to be. We need clear direction so we know where we're going, and we can rely on the council direction as, as we move it forward.
And while it's great to have a policy, and it does give us flexibility, but it gives us flexibility. And I'm concerned that if there isn't some kind of, and I don't know all the technical terms, but a community benefit overlay or some kind of a map to target locations, then people can do whatever with it, which is one of the, one of the benefits that you're talking about. So, and it's also 11:30 at night, and I just think that's too big a change to start talking about at 11:30 at night. So that's my concern.
Councilmember Lorraine has a, has his hand up as well.
I'll be quick, but I, I would like to propose something that I, I think marries what we've been discussing. Perhaps there could be an option for projects within the rail corridor that are large enough, you know, large projects within the rail corridor. I, I think that, I think that touches on a number of interests that this council has with regard to this. I think it limits the scope, it targets the areas closest to transit, which is most impactful for a number of reasons we all know, but particularly as we've been discussing tonight and, and recently, is helpfully a little farther away from 101 and 92 with regard to air pollution considerations. I think it helps us avoid some of the issues that some of us have with the downtown properties, if they're too small, and, and maybe not large enough to, to show a community benefit that would be worthy of allowing that extra consideration. So that would be my humble suggestion.
I had mentioned, I had mentioned earlier through the mayor that I'm having second thoughts, and the vice mayor had mentioned she wanted it targeted, I think a quarter of a mile. I happen to know, and anybody else that's met with Bohannon knows, that he's only interested in more height on the east side. So I would limit it an eighth of a mile on the east side and an eighth of a mile on the west side of the Hayward Park Station, because on, on the east side of Hayward Park, it's all been, been, been done already, there's no ground left. So I, and I'm just very nervous about having anything about going to High Two that will get out there and be used, because I just, I've fought these fights before, and I know how it's done, and I know with too many conversations I've had coming up to this, that people calling me and telling me they don't want any height at all, and then I ask them about the study areas, and they don't even know what I'm talking about, they're just keying off on an email they got from somebody. So we're going to be facing that, and we've got to be very careful what we put on here, that can't be juxtaposed and used against trying to get a reasonable height increase and density increase. So my proposal would be what I just said, and we, and, and what Councilmember Newsom brought up. What we didn't have when we did the 75 feet, if you have a community benefit, is we didn't have the density bonuses for, for housing. So I'm just very nervous with the density bonuses, and then giving, giving more that may be taken, or at least being able to expound on that. Well, they're going to do higher at these locations, and, and then there'll be density bonuses, and they'll be talking about 15-story buildings. And then the next thing you know, the rhetoric with the people that are against this will be, oh, they're going to build 15-story buildings in San Mateo. I just know how it works, because I've fought it for years. So in my dreams, I would do more than High Two if I could, but I don't think we can get it passed.
Through the mayor.
Alex, yes?
Understanding we're at 11:35 this evening, what if we were to continue this meeting and staff go back and actually get a map with maybe a quarter mile and actually look at the policy and just continue having this dialogue so that we make sound public policy at a decent time, and it allows us all to regroup with that? I'm, I'm looking to the, to the council.
I think that's a great idea.
Agreed.
Councilmember Hedges, yes?
I think we can settle tonight. I'm about ready to make a motion.
I think we have a majority in favor of continuation. So, so.
Somebody, I'll make a motion to continue this and see if we get a second, and then we can vote on it.
Can I interject? So in order to continue the meeting, I think you would need to specify, like, when is the continued meeting going to be? Like, what's the, it's going to be in council chambers presumably, but what time, what day? We need to provide notice on the Brown Act.
Okay.
Pulling out the calendars. So I know we have a November 6 council meeting, so that'll, but that, we couldn't add this.